All right, everybody. Good evening. Please take your seats. We're gonna start. Please take your seats. Hey, sorry. I'm there. All right, please be seated, everybody, for the moment. Okay. Let's start. Today is Wednesday, May 14th. I now call to order the fourth session of the 2025 Annual Town Meeting for the town of Stoughton. The meeting is now in session. This meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium at 232 Pearl Street. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand as you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Please be seated. During the last several meetings, I believe I introduced all our town officials. However, joining us this evening is Town Council's attorney, Brian Winner, from the law firm of Me, Talman Acosta. Welcome, Brian. All right, just a couple announcements. Mr. Kevin Halleck, did you want to say anything about the microphones?
Good evening, everybody. Just to take a minute of your time. So, when you come up to the microphones over here, you should just leave them on. They're all on right now. We have to keep the volume down a little bit because if we keep the volume all the way up, you're gonna get feedback. So, like you're getting right now. So, just start talking and we'll adjust the volume as you go, okay? Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Kevin. All right, just a quick announcement from your moderator here. Following Monday night's meeting, I've heard from several town meeting reps who were upset by some of the comments that were made during that meeting. Demeaning comments, swearing, heckling, and the like will not be tolerated, period. We all need to cooperate with each other as we discuss and debate the articles that are before us. We have to do it with the quorum. So, let's move on. Thank you. All right. I'll ask, hopefully for the last time, are there any town meeting reps that need to be sworn in? Has everybody been sworn in at some point? Okay, thank you, Ms. Anzavino. At this point also, please silence your phones. All right. All right, now we have to take attendance. This is to determine if we have a quorum to proceed with the annual town meeting business. I'm gonna call out each precinct chair for the numbers. Juan Flocks, Precinct 1. 16, Precinct 1. George Stilinski, Precinct 2. 17, Precinct 2. Matthew Callis, Precinct 3. 18, Precinct 3. Julie Gito, Precinct 4. 18, Precinct 4. Dex Lanson, Vice Chair, Precinct 5. 13, Precinct 5. Bob Kirby, Precinct 6. 17, Precinct 6. Diane Dolan, Precinct 7. 14, Precinct 7. David Sheen, Precinct 8. 12, and Precinct 8. Okay, let's give the clerks a few minutes to tally the count. All right, we have 125 town meeting reps present and our quorum's 85, so we obviously meet the quorum. So, we're gonna continue our business. The first order of business, we should test the clickers again. 125 is the number of town meeting reps present. All right, are we ready to go? Please test your clippers with three. Make your selections. Okay, 124, that's okay. I'd call that close enough. All right, just a couple reminders. Procedure motions were moved and voted on on Monday, May 5th. They do remain in effect. And on Monday, May 12th, which was last Monday, we completed Article 33, which was Town Hall Traffic Parking Pocket Park and Landscape Improvements. So, the next article this evening coming up is Article 34. And that's on page 56, Police Station Expansion and Renovation Design. And I'll ask Mark Tisdale. I believe this is a motion to dismiss.
Thank you, Bob. Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager.
What's that?
Okay, I didn't hear the microphones on now.
Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager. We are gonna motion to dismiss. I'd just like to give a two-sentence reason why, just for the public, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's okay. Why don't we take the motion for us? Kinda got a motion to dismiss from a town meeting rep?
You'd like to have a motion to dismiss.
All right, go ahead, Mark.
The reason for this dismissal is because we're in the middle of the feasibility study that got approved, I believe, last town meeting for like around $400,000. Don't call me on the exact number. But we're in the feasibility study right now. And we felt it was improper to come forward with extending a schematic design and giving that, putting that in front of town meeting when we haven't even finished the feasibility study yet. It just wasn't feared of, feared of this body. So, we're gonna finish the feasibility study, get a cost estimate based on that, analyze the situation, vet it, have a couple public forms on the findings of the feasibility study, and then come back at a future town meeting for the funding, requesting the funding for a schematic design. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna take, the motion was made to dismiss and seconded. Now, who made the motion to dismiss? Just for John Anzavino and George, did you second it? Okay, just for our records. Okay, I'm gonna take a voice vote. All of them in favor to dismiss Article 34, say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. I declare that a vote. Let's move on. Next page. We're at Article 35 on page 57. All right, so the motion, Mr. Anokian, please.
That the town vote to appropriate or reserve from Community Preservation Fund FY 2026 estimated annual revenues and from the Community Preservation Fund the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses in fiscal year 2026 and for other CPA purposes as specified below with each item considered a separate appropriation. From Community Preservation Fund FY 2026 estimated annual revenues, Community Preservation Administrative Expenses, $57,766. Community Housing Reserve, $115,764. Historic Resources Reserve, $115,764. Open Space Reserve, $115,764. FY 2026 budgeted annual reserve, $752,582. And further, to transfer the sum of $292,138 from the Open Space Reserve, $18,850 from the Historic Resources Reserve, $0 from the Community Housing Reserve, and $19,050 from the undesignated fund balance for the following: long-term debt service, $330,038.
Thank you. Is there a second? Oh, Cynthia. Okay, Cynthia Walsh. Thank you, Cynthia. Okay, Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted 12 to 1 to 0 to approve and recommend the town meeting Article 35 as written in the warrant.
All right, I'll read into governmental relations. They voted 7, 0, 0 to approve and recommend the town meeting Article 35 as written in the warrant. All right, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Barry Kastler. I'm the Program Administrator for the Community Preservation Committee. And the Community Preservation Committee budget is put together each year based on information provided by the Finance Director. It's very much a, more or less a set formula. It doesn't change very much from year to years. The numbers change, obviously, but the formula is the same. And here to present the budget and with a slide presentation is Community Preservation Committee Chair and Treasurer, Michael Barrett.
Hi, Michael Barrett. As Barry said, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. First, I'd like to draw your attention. I don't know if you've seen this before, the nice colorful little logo that we have for the CPC, which was drawn up by a high school student. We had a contest last year and this was the winning vote. And we're trying to get it out there on our own internal stuff as well as the signs that you'll see around town for some of our projects. I've been asked to go quick, so I'm gonna try to go through these slides real quick, but we gotta get them to go first. Okay, first off, this chart just shows you who the members of the Community Preservation Committee are, where they're sourced from. We have nine members on the committee. Seven come from various organizations across the town. And you can see the terms of expiration there. Down below that, I've added a number of former CPC members. I did wanna call out, on the left-hand side, John Morton, who was the founding father of the CPC and longtime chair, left the committee last year after the annual town meeting, but is not forgotten and has certainly left his mark on just about everything we do. Likewise, Mark Zemanian, who was, took over from John a couple years ago as Chair, moved out of town, but he had a, he had a good run with us as well. Couple members, Joe Scardino and Janice, that are usually here. I don't know if they're both here tonight. I see Joe in the front row. And we do have, I think, three members of the committee who are also town meeting members that are in the room tonight. But just, it takes a lot of people and a lot of time to get it done what we do, and I'm very proud and happy to work with these folks. But that's all I wanted to say about the group. Quick rundown of what we have. We've been around now for 16 years. We'll take a look at the revenue expenditures and our reserves after all that activity through June 30th of 2024. Quick look at the projects that are in progress and then the budget. In the appendix are some more detailed schedules, some of which are also in your book. Just, I'm not gonna go into the detail, but they just support all the other slides that we're gonna talk about. First slide is the CPA history. You can see that we were initial adoption of April 8th, 2008. It was a tight vote. We only got a 51% favorable vote from town. CPA was effective in fiscal year 2009. Since that time, we've raised $19.4 million, most of which comes from the local surcharge, and $4.3 million in bond proceeds. The state match is $2.9 million as of June 30th, 2024. Since that time, we've collected another couple hundred thousand dollars and we'll get, I think, about 150, 200 for fiscal year 2025. So, that number just keeps going up and up, but there is a slight delay in when it hits our books. And then the other is just minor stuff coming through, interest and on the earnings. Of that money, we've spent $10.9 million, $3.7 million in recreation, $2.7 million on historic resources. We've paid back $1.9 million of the $4.3 million of borrowing. We've paid out $1.3 million on open space projects, $700,000 of interest, community housing, $400,000. And over 16 years, we've spent out a little under $200,000 for our administrative costs. Very effective spend. Given that we, we've got revenue of 19-plus million and we've spent 10, we've got about 8.5 million in our reserve funds and in the various accounts on the balance sheet that we work with Biz pretty closely on. Of that amount, about $4.3 million is reserved for projects that have been approved by this body, but the money has not yet been spent. There's about just under $2 million in the undesignated fund. It's money we have not yet allocated to a project. There's some reserve funds for special purposes, $388,000. There are the individual reserves that we'll see in the budget where we set aside every year 10% into those three accounts. Community housing has $727,000. Historic resources has $501,000. Open space, $253,000. And then there's a few other encumbrances for a couple hundred thousand dollars. Not gonna go through the detail here. This is about 15 projects that are currently underway. Some of them are more complete than what it showed on the chart. But you can see here the 4-point-something-million-dollar worth of spending that's approved but not yet spent. Some exciting, some exciting projects up there that we'll touch upon, but... And then we'll move into the FY 26 budget. We've simplified the budget this year. Biz and Tom, I believe, met with the Department of Revenue when they came back with the recommendation that we could make it a little simpler if we just kept the budget to be the two key lines, which is the local surcharge and the state match. So, the local surcharge is just over a million dollars. And the state match this year, they recommended we include 15% or $150,000. We used to include all the other little lines for interest and other that don't really have an impact on us. We will still get some revenue on those lines. It'll just be a positive variance to budget at the end of the year. Our funding sources as of the end of fiscal year 2024, we have the $6.8 million in the undesignated fund and the reserve accounts. Again, 4.5 million of that is tied up in projects that have been approved, but it hasn't been spent. And then the three individual reserves, this is just showing those same numbers rolled out another year. The last slide was as of June 30th, 2024. We've rolled it out to see what they're gonna look like June 30th, 2025, based on our best guess of spending. You can see that we'll have $839,000 in housing, $594 in historic, and $292,000 in open space. What we expect to do with that money going forward is, we have two articles, one of which you heard from Mark Tisdale on Monday night. Thank you for the approval because I think it's a great project for us. But two articles for a million dollars, that was 820. Another article that'll be proposed tonight for Glen Echo. We have the debt service of $330,000. And we've set aside 5% of our income for administrative. That's what the CPA law allows us to do with, as we saw earlier. We never spend anywhere near that. We don't expect to spend near that. But we like to have that money in case something came up between now and next town meeting that we needed money for, we would have it available. And then in the appendix is really just all the detailed schedules going behind that. So, with that, I will entertain any questions or whatever.
Okay, thank you, Michael Barrett and Barry Kastler, for your presentations. All right, at this point, we're in technical questions. Anybody for technical questions? Please rise, state your name and precinct and your question, please. Not yet. Might take a moment. There you go, I think it's on now.
Turned on. Jim Yerren, Precinct 6. I've been looking at the, the portion that is supposed to go to community housing, and it seems to me that that's lower than it should be given the state of housing in Massachusetts today. Is there some reason that it's not being spent?
I think the committee would agree with you 110%. The good news, if you recall, last year, we approved $1.3 million for the Hebrew Senior Life Project, which has, the money hasn't been spent yet, but there is an approval out there, and we do expect that in somewhere in fiscal year 2026, that money will go out the door. We also have the Father Bill's Main Spring Project down on 138. That's moving quite along. They're making some great progress for another $250,000. To add a little detail to the answer as well, though, over the years, we've approved a number of projects that just didn't work out legally. Couldn't get acquisition of the property involved and stuff. It's just a very complex process. And it's been a point of discussion for us at the committee on a regular basis. That's why last year, we were very thrilled to get that kind of money on two big projects, so. It will jump up that chart significantly in another year or two.
Thank you very much.
It's a good question.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Please come to the microphone, state your name and precinct number, please.
Marina Ryan, Precinct 7. I went through the projects that you presented, and I have a question about Town Hall cupola for $450,000. What is it?
I'm sorry, which one?
So, it's line 10232, Town Hall cupola. For $450,000.
Yeah, we've had several projects here at Town Hall where we did some of the, we did the roof, we did some of the bricks and siding and windows and things like that.
This is what, roof or siding? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
This is not the roof. This is something else. Would you explain what it is?
I don't understand. Oh, it's on the roof?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
What page are you on, Marina? Oh, you're talking about the parking lot? I'm not sure. Oh, the roof?
Cupola. I just, I know what it is. I just...
I just couldn't hear you with the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Must be my pronunciation. Yes. Is it? Yeah.
That was an older project from years ago that was bonded. It's showing up. What you're looking at is the detail of the debt service payments that we're still paying off that project, but the cupola is up on the roof at Town Hall.
We're still paying $450 this year for, no.
Okay, that's your second question. You probably have an extra question. You slipped in there, okay?
I know. Thank you.
The debt service on that is $18,850. Let me see, I can... Let me see, I can...
And while we're waiting for the answer, if anybody else has technical questions, please come down to the microphone so we can keep this process moving.
Yeah, it looks like a project that goes back to 2018. We took out a note of $190,000 over 15 years. So the paying back of the principal plus the interest is the $18,000.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else with technical questions. Let's go and pro and con debate. Any pro and con debate? Seeing no one coming to the microphones? Michael Barrett, would you like to do a quick summary or are we good?
I, I think we're good. I mean, I...
Thank you very much. We're good.
I will take the chance to say thank you to town meeting members who have always supported us well on our projects. I think we've got about 50 to 60 projects that we've either completed or as we saw, still going on. But it's been great for the town and we couldn't do it without you guys.
Okay. Thank you very much for the comments. All right. We're ready to vote. Simple majority. Let's put it up on the screen. Let me know when we're ready. I hear a phone ringing. Please silence that. We did make the announcement. Just give us a moment to get that. Get that ready. Okay, we're good. Please vote. Simple majority. One, two, or three. Okay, Article 35 passes. One, 13 yes, 15 no, two abstentions. I declare that a vote. That was quick. How many of those were there? 15? All right. Let's move on. Page 58, Article 36, Glen Echo Pavilion Benches. Mr. Nokene, if you're ready?
I am. That the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of $180,000 to support the design, permitting, and construction of a new pavilion, permanent benches, fences, and other related equipment at Glen Echo Park, Assessors Map 070, Parcel 104.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Peter Ventresco seconded that. Thank you, Mr. Ventresco. Okay. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 12 to 1 to 0 to approve and recommend to Town Meeting Article 36 as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Municipal Operations Committee report.
Municipal Operations voted 5 to 0 to 0 to approve and recommend to Town Meeting Article 36 as written in the warrant.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barry Kassler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Barry Kassler again, CPC Program Administrator. The Glen Echo Recreation and Development Committee, led by its Chair, Eric Coleman, who we'll hear from in a moment, came to the CPC with a proposal to provide a covered structure for the people who are visiting Glen Echo near the lake. The CPC voted unanimously to recommend this article, 7 to nothing. And here to explain the details of the project is Eric Coleman.
Thank you. I'm Eric Coleman, Precinct 5, Chair of the Glen Echo Recreation and Development Committee. Got some slides. I think we do. Here we are. Cal Ziek was our architect, and this is what he planned for us. And you notice in the middle of the slide and the green lawn, there's a shade pavilion. So we're working on that as the main part of this article. Main reasons for the shade pavilion are, it's a community gathering space, shade protection and weather protection when it rains or it's sunny out. And the, within the shade pavilion, half of it is going to be benches, I'm sorry, tables with seating, and the other half is empty. And the reason for that is functionality. So handicapped access to the tables from the parking lot. And the other part, the empty part, is going to be for play, performances, and other activities. And also portable tables can be brought in for any bigger gatherings that you need. So this is going to help give enhanced outdoor experience for those who want to experience the outdoors. It's for health and well-being. It's a great spot for community image. Let's go for some more slides. That is what we've got now. And you see the blue square, that's the handicap parking. And right now, there are three tables there, which are going to be part of this new shade pavilion. So the pad is going to be enlarged to fit a 44 by 24 foot pavilion. This is a long-term investment. It's a steel structure with sprayed paint on it, so it's going to last a long time for us. We've got support from the residents. I asked the residents in Facebook to write in support, and we've got 10 write-in votes and write-in letters in there, and you'll see that in your book, too. Also, when Cal Ziek did his plan, he got support for the shade pavilion as well. It's cost-effective structure. All right. So that is it for the shade pavilion. And also, we're going to have benches. Let's see what's, have the next slide. That shows the position of the pavilion, the large pink rectangle there. And go on. Here, again, that little diagram is where the pavilion is. And in small print, you can see where the benches would be going, near the water, on the back of the great lawn. One on the other side of the roadway going to the water. And there's one you can see, looks like it's in the trees, but that's the lookout spot where you can look over the, the lake. And there's also a table currently there. And as far as the fence is concerned, at the recommendation of the Conservation Department Committee, we're having stone boulders instead of a fence there to block access from, keep cars from going onto the great lawn and also the other side of the roadway to keep the cars parked, from parking in there. Protects the people on the lawn and protects the lawn itself. That's what I've got, and can entertain questions if there are any.
Thank you very much, Eric, for your presentation. Mr. Haben, please identify yourself.
Mike Harbin, Precinct 8, Disability Commission. What is the surface going to be like and how accessible is it to get to the benches? What are you using? Are you using stone dust or what would be the pathways?
The benches way down?
Yeah, because it's sloped right now. It's difficult. If you have accessibility issues, it's difficult to get, difficult to get to.
That's crushed gravel on the roadway going down to the, to the lake, if that's your question.
Yeah, because it's tough because the slope makes it tough if you're in a wheelchair because it goes down really quickly. That's what I was concerned about.
Well, there is a slope. I don't know exactly what the slope is. And it's not a handicapped accessible roadway, unfortunately, because of the way the land goes.
How do you people get to the benches if it's not accessible?
What?
Well, if you're in a wheelchair, it's difficult to get there.
No, wheelchairs at this point cannot get down to the benches unless you want to, unless people want it to go down there. When it's handicapped accessible, that's by the rules, but that doesn't mean you can't take your chair and go down there, or if somebody's pushing you, you can go down there. You should be able to.
Michael, you kind of slipped in a few extras. Sorry. Thank you. All right. Next up is David Laurie.
Thank you. Thank you. It's not on. It is on. David Laurie, Precinct 6. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I, I'm not sure if I read anywhere in the, in the material about a dock. I do see in scope the pavilion and the benches and the fence. There's a, there's the word dock, and I know that a long time ago, the plan was to have a dock going into the, into the pond. Can you tell us whether or not the dock is in scope now, and if not, will it be in later?
It's not in the current plan. It's not in this article. I would like to see a dock there, but that's...
Am I reading that wrong? It's over in, in the opening in front of the water? I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I'm just pointing out, I think I see the word dock up there.
Sounds like a question to me, Dave.
It's not a question. I'm just pointing to the, to the fact that there's the word dock, and I thought that it might be in scope. That's why I brought up the question.
If you can look at page 212 in the book two. Oh, it is. It does say dock. Good point. No, this, that would be where a dock would go, but it's not part of this article.
But it's not in scope. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you for the question.
Next up is Roberta Habbak.
Roberta Habbak, Precinct 7. Have, did you inquire from any contractor or Southeastern to do any of this work? Maybe if the supplies were built, contractor or multiple contractors would, if there was something, a plaque that honored them? It just seems excessive.
Oh, we, we haven't gone that far.
While you're looking for a bid.
The procurement would handle that, I believe.
So you didn't try to find another option for volunteers or the Southeastern to do any of this work, some of the students to do some of it?
I was told, if I remember correctly, it's beyond their scope. You're talking about the actual pavilion itself?
The pavilion or the benches? I mean, you have to request it. You just can't call.
Benches could probably be put in by TPW.
All right. No more crossing.
Well, I'm just saying the process. I know the process.
Your question was, did you, did they go to Southeastern?
So, so their answer was no. They didn't. They just go on this route. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, let's move on to pro and con. Mr. Souza, you have a technical question?
Yes, a quick one. Antonio Souza, Precinct 3. My question is, I see where we have the boulders to protect the lawn and the areas around it. Is any boulders will protect the shaded area of the pavilion? Because in this day and age, vandalism takes place all the time. Is anything that will protect that structure?
I expect there will be boulders. First of all, the pavilion has to be built, so it has to be accessible for building. And then after that, I expect boulders to be in that area to prevent cars from going on there. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Good question.
Thank you both. Steve, did you have a question, a technical question? Okay. I don't see anybody else with technical questions. We're moving on to pro and con. Please, those people have pro and con comments. Move to the microphones now. And Steve Wilkinson, you're up for us.
Thank you, sir. Steve Wilkinson, Precinct 4. I was up at Glen Echo the other day. Every time I go there, it's just great. It's beautiful. It's a wonderful project. Thank you for doing it. My concern with this project is, the day I was there was nice and sunny. There's plenty of shade under the trees. I'm afraid the only time the pavilion would really need to be used is if it's raining. And my question is, what are people doing up there if it's raining? I'm afraid this is going to attract people who may not be doing things that should be done there. And I don't think we feel like we want to have the police park a car there just to keep track of what's going on. You know, it's an isolated area. I think it's tough enough for the police to keep track of what's going on there now, and I just think this will exacerbate the situation.
Thank you for your question.
Well, it's not a question. It's a comment.
It's a comment. Okay. I'll leave it be.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both. That was a comment. All right. I think, who's next? Marina, please identify yourself, please.
Marina Ri, Marina Ryan, Precinct 7. I'm, my only concern is that recreation has a lot of projects, and all of them are very expensive, including this one. So I'd like to encourage, you know, for every project going forward, we need to, you need to space it out and budget out. And that goes to every project because it, at the end, it affects the town budget and it affects taxpayers' pockets. So I just want everybody to be aware that what we are voting for is, is going to, you know, cut back on us. So please be aware and, and plan accordingly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Richard Parlin, Precinct 1. I lived on the street for over 50 years, and we've always had trouble with kids hanging around down that end, near the lake. Now, my wife and I went down, oh, about four or five weeks ago, and we parked and we walked around. We sat by the benches near the lake. We were coming out. There was a party near the road. We watched the balloons float down, go into the water across the lake. No one tried to stop it. A lot of debris on the ground. I don't know if it got cleaned up or not afterwards, but there was a lot of debris there. The cars were not packed in the parking area. They were packed in the circle right outside the fence. And I think that causes a problem, and I personally would not like to see it. The road is narrow going down. The road going in there is narrow. And if there's any kind of a big problem, it's going to be trouble getting a fire engine or police down into the area. I remember when they put a sewer into one of my neighbors right across the street, they had to pack a fire engine on the opposite side so if anything happened down there, that's the only way in. So I'm against it, and I hope everyone else votes against it, too, because I think it'll be a hangup for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go over here to pro comment. Mr. Star?
Edward Star, Precinct 6. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is to the Chief of Police. Is this going to include a guards or some type of police action so that they can monitor the area when there are people there sometimes during the day and evening? So this, this amount of money there is not really the amount of money that's going to be used then, because I think we're going to have to have police somewhere in that, in that area.
Okay, that's just a comment. We're just taking comments.
That's a comment.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next up was Roberta Habbak, then I'll get you, get to you, Cynthia. Yeah, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Back again with my con. I'm disappointed that the committee didn't look for other, more affordable avenues. I think a lot of people look at the CPC money as just extra money that we get as a slush fund. And I think if you were putting something like this in your own backyard, this price is crazy. And along with the limited parking and what the other people have said, it's just too bad that you didn't, you just went out for a bid and not consulted any other means to get this project done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Cynthia Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3. There is nowhere you can do anything in this town that there isn't a potential for vandalism. I mean, my own home has been vandalized. That doesn't prevent us from doing something that will benefit especially children in the community so that they, they can see the lake and they can, and just run around. If you've been to any places where they have parks, they're, they're jokes. They're little patches of grass. This is beautiful, and they're trying to make it more functional. Maybe I'll never go there, but there's plenty of people in this town that enjoy a little peace and quiet. And if there's an issue, you do what you do. If it was at your own home, you call the police.
Thank you very much. We're going to go up here. Is your name Grace?
It's Teddy. I go by Teddy.
I'm sorry. Apologize.
No worries. I ran under Grace. It's a reasonable jump. I'm speaking in support of the pavilion. I actually think it would be great for there to be a third space. I don't know if you're familiar with that concept. It's a place you can spend a lot of time without having to buy something or do something. You can just be there. You can just be there with people for youth in the town. I have noticed that there is actually not a whole lot of that. And if, you know, my, if my youth is any, is any judgment, I would have loved to go hang out at the lake, under a nice pavilion. I think if you're concerned about vandalism, again, Cynthia said, you handle it the way you would always. There are people living right near Glen Echo. That's not going to be an issue. You provide trash cans. I've met a lot of the teenagers in Stoughton, they will put things in the trash can. They seem like really nice kids. Mine's much littler, but she would also love to have a birthday party under a pavilion because all she wants to do is run around the grass. So I think that there's a real need for something like this. There is shade under the trees, but more shade is good. It's hot in the summer, it's already getting hot now. Having somewhere that is smooth, that you can access with a wheelchair, since we clearly see that you can't get down to the trees with a wheelchair, it would be great to be able to sit under here, look at the lake, spend time with your friends and your family. I've been to Glen Echo Park, I really love Glen Echo Park. I would use this pavilion, and I think a lot of us would. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lurie.
David Lurie, Precinct 6. Ever since the beginning of CPA, when it comes to like money for projects like this, my only concern has always been is that the number, the amount that they ask us to pay into that one and a half percent on our property tax is too high. But while they have the money that they have, there's certain things I think is perfect for this kind of fund, and that is parks and recreation. Other than infrastructure that we put into our town, the sewers, the roads, all the things we do are necessary, but guess what? Parks and recreation is a key part of a town. These are the kinds of things we should be investing in. This project, I don't think is that overly priced, and I think against all the money that they have, they could probably do something nice like this kind of project. You know, so I just encourage people to vote yes. It was, it goes back, by the way, I think the Glen Echo project was back at least 10 years, if I'm not mistaken. And at the very beginning, they envisioned having a pavilion. They also envisioned having a dock, which I'm hoping that will be in the pipeline soon as a completion of this thing. And I hope they also stay away from loud sporting things, you know, like pickleball and things that are too noisy. That was also part of the original plan, was to keep it a very quiet place to go for people to relax. I encourage people to vote yes, it's a good idea, it's, it's fitting for the town, and it's appropriate for a CPA project.
Okay, thank you. The gentleman back there, identify yourself, please.
Noah Beetha-Harone, Precinct 6. I agree with both Dave and with Teddy that this is a great project and that we should vote yes for it. I am concerned that some people in this town, in this room, are afraid of teenagers and equate them with crime. And I don't think that being a teenager is a crime, and I don't think that teenagers gathering somewhere is a conspiracy. And so I would like for us to approve of projects that allow people to hang out together in free spaces, in green spaces, in attractive spaces, whatever their age. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Moving over here, John Taggart.
John Taggart, Precinct 1. There's a sign that was taken down when they did the construction of the park, and I love the park, I really do. They, they did a nice job in there. I believe the sign is four by 15, 16 feet long. I may be wrong, I'm just coming up with a figure that I, from memory. I'm wondering what happened to that sign?
It's not a question, these are comments right now. So you're out of order?
I'm sorry?
You're out of order. There's no questions, not a question.
I, I can't ask?
No, you cannot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You had a chance to ask the question.
All right, while I'm here.
Okay, you're all set. No, you asked, please sit down, John. I ruled you out of order. All right. Jess, please identify yourself.
Jess Minor, Precinct 5. Move the question, please.
I'm sorry, what was it? Move the question?
Move the question.
Down here, it's, I understand. Thank you. Now I heard it. Down here, it's hard to hear the microphones.
Yeah, no problem. I'll say it four times if you need.
Well, I recognize her, so. I recognize Jess, so. Motion was move the question. It takes a two-thirds vote to move the question, stop debate. I'll do a voice vote, see if we can do it that way. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. All right, let's go back. Eric, do you want to summary, or you're all set?
Can we have the screen on again?
Just very quickly, okay?
Can we have the screen? Just a moment.
Very quick, Eric.
I wanted the screen on. Never mind, we're all done. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you. All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, give us a moment, we're going to be ready to vote. Hold your clickers in your hand. Please vote now. Simple majority. Simple majority, just a reminder, simple majority. All right, Article 36 passes, one 11 yes, 25 no, zero extension. All right, let's move on. Next page. We're on page 57, 59, excuse me, 59, Article 37. That's the Stoughton Depot Rehabilitation Payment of Previously Authorized Bonding. Can I have the motion, Mr. Von Anokian, please?
That the town vote pursuant to general law chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, undesignated fund balance of sum of $310,867.88 to clear the FY25 deficit and expenditures related to Munis Project 10060, rehabilitation of the Stoughton Depot Building located at 45 Wyman Street, assesses map 054, parcel 442.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Carolyn Campbell, thank you very much, Carolyn. Can I get the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to 0 to approve and recommend the town meeting Article 37 as written in the warrant.
Thank you very much, Vaughn. All right, we're going to have Elizabeth Zaleski and Barry Kassler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Barry Kassler, CPC Program Administrator. This is an accounting article, basically. We, town, town meeting authorized payment of a bond, but didn't have the, the money had to be moved in order for that to happen. This article moves that money where it belongs. And to give you some more details, here is Town Finance Director Elizabeth Zaleski.
Thank you very much. Thank you quite simply, the, several years ago, the town voted to pay down a ban which is a temporary borrowing for this project, but what they did not do was to continue to take out the final bond. So they paid the ban, didn't take out a bond, so therefore left the account in a deficit of $310,867.88. And what we've done is we worked together to come up with a solution to this problem, and this will now come off of our free cash calculation as a reduction. So it will give us some more positive feedback on this year's close for free cash. Any questions?
Thank you, Biz. All right, technical questions? Anybody rising to the microphone? Seeing none, we're going to move right on if you're not moving. Pro and con debate? Seeing none? No one for pro and con debate? Are we ready for the clickers? Okay, and this is a simple, simple majority, please vote now. All right, Article 37 passes, one 23 yes, 11 no, two extension. All right, let's move on. Page 60. This is Article 38, closeouts of prior appropriations dash for CPC committee. All right, can I have the motion, Mr. Anokian, please?
That the town vote to close out the below projects in return remaining balances to the accounts listed below. Would you like me to read these, Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Would you like me to read?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for the record, so we get.
Okay. Fund Department project, account description, project balance, in that order. 5040 CPA, project 10292, ATM 519, rehab fire station number one, $111,449.15 returned to CPA historic. Fund 5040 CPA, project 10444, STM 1020, railroad depot restoration, $0, NA. Fund 5040 Department CPA, project 10445, STM 1020 Glen Echo rec facility, $5,121.05 returned to CPA undesignated. Fund 5040 Department CPA, project 10501, ATM 521, restoration of fire engine, $0. Fund 5050 Department CPA, project 10589, ATM 522, West Street bond evaluation, $2,000 returned to CPA historic. Fund 5040 Department CPA, project 10701, ATM 523, City Hill tee boxes, $212.99 returned to CPA undesignated. Total $118,783.19.
All right, is there a second? Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Okay, for the presentation, Barry Kassler.
Would you like to hear the Finance Committee report, Mr. Moderator?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Hey, that's a good, good point. Thank you, Vaughn.
Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to approve and recommend the town meeting Article 38 as written in the warrant.
Thank you, Vaughn. Now Barry Kassler and Biz.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Mr. Anokian. This is a formal close, these are formal closeouts of CPA projects. Michael Barrett, our Chair and Treasurer, spoke before about how we're making sure that projects that are approved are seen through to completion. And this is a list of projects that are either fit that category, or no longer need CPA funding, or have spent their balance down to zero. So if you have any questions, I will accept them.
Okay, thank you very much, Barry. Any technical questions? Please rise to the microphone. We'll get you a second, James.
Kevin Monahan, Precinct 3. What was just up on the board has a different balance than what is in the book. I just like that.
The motion that was read is the motion that was printed in the book. It is different from the, from the article because projects were being completed between the time that the article was written and the time that motion was submitted. What you have in front of you as a motion is correct.
Thank you both. Anybody else? Seeing none? Let's move on to pro and con debate. Anybody for pro and con debate? Seeing none? Okay, I think we're ready to take the vote. Let me know. Okay, please vote now, one, two, or three? And simple majority. All right, Article 38 passes, one 30 yes, two no, one extension. One 30 yes, two no, one extension. All right, let's move on to Article 39. Zoning bylaw, use table correction, that is on page 61. Let me just see who's going to read the motion. Give me a moment. Mr. Murphy, identify yourself, please.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2, member of the Planning Board. Proposed motion, the town to vote, amend the town of Stoughton zoning bylaw, November 18, 2015, to amend through May 15, 2024, section 3.1.4. Table use regulations as set forth below, with the next to be inserted shown in bold and underlined, and the text to be deleted shown in bold straight through as noted below in the chart below. I turn it over to Bill.
Okay. That's the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, that's fine. Is there a second? George Stolinski, seconded now.
I read the municipal regulations report. They voted 800 to accept and recommend the town meeting Article 39 as written in the warrant.
All right, for the presentation is Town Planner, Bill Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Roth, Town Planner. The Attorney General's Office notified the town that our use table does not comply with state law because we prohibit or restrict several, several of the uses, actually six, that are allowed in industrial districts and are subject to state regulations and permitting. The purpose of this amendment is just to bring us into compliance with state law. So these uses are, are allowed under state law.
Thank you, Bill. All right, for Article 39, any technical questions? Mr. Wilkinson?
Steve Wilkinson, Precinct 4. It appears in the old use regulations that the town does not allow hazardous or radioactive waste. Why do we want to change that?
Through the, through the moderator, it is a use that the state permits and allows in any industrial district, subject to state citing and permitting regulations. So we cannot, you know, they can, you know, circumvent and oversee to our zoning. So this is just to comply with zoning. It still takes state permitting and citing.
You have a second question?
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
So if we decide we don't want hazardous and radioactive waste in our town, and we vote against this, then the state can impose it upon us anyway? Or do we have some kind of recourse to prevent that?
The, the state could override the zoning, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Mr. Parlin?
Richard Parlin, Precinct 1. The C and D facility up in North Stoughton on Page Street, is that in the aquifer protection area?
Up on the old landfill?
The old dump, right.
Yeah, that's, that's zoned industrial up there.
That's not industrial?
That's not, that's not zoned, we don't have an agriculture zone, that's zoned industrial.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none? Let's go to pro, pro and con debate? Eric, are you getting up for pro and con? Okay, you were slow, but go ahead, ask your question.
What is BA that we're crossing out? Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. An industrial that crossed out BA. What is that? By appeal or Board of Appeals?
Could you repeat? I did not hear the question.
I'm sorry. On the chart, under industrial, third from the bottom, for example, BA is crossed out. What is BA?
Oh, I'm sorry, BA, that would have been a, we had required a special permit from the Board of Appeals, and so, you know, it's not, it's, that would restrict the use, therefore it has to be, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions? I'm seeing no one rising. So we're going to go on to pro and con debate? Anybody for pro and con debate? Seeing none? Okay, this is, I just want to double check with Town Counselors. Two-thirds vote, because it's zoning. Are we ready? Okay, please vote now, the voting's open. Please vote one, two, or three? All right, Article 39 passes. All right, Article thirty-nine passes, one one nine, that's one nineteen, yes, thirteen no, three abstentions. All right, let's move on. Next page, returning to page sixty-two, Article forty, zoning bylaw floodplain, aquifer protection and wetland zoning bylaw amendment. Okay, Mr. Murphy, you're making the motion?
Peter Murphy, precinct two, still a planning board. Proposed motion, the town vote to amend the chapter two hundred of the town of Stoughton zoning bylaw as set forth in a document entitled twenty twenty-five, proposed floodplain, aqua, aquifer protection and wetland zoning bylaw amendment, on the file with the clerk's, town clerk's office and included in the apex here too.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Elliot Hanson. Thank you both. Just give me one second. I'll read the municipal regulations report. They voted seven one zero to accept and recommend the town meeting Article forty as written in the warrants. Okay, for the presentation, Bill Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Roth, town planner. This article is divided into four sections. We've done an A, B, C, and D. The first one is item A. It proposes to add a footnote to the use table in section four to the amount of wetlands that can be counted to meet the minimum size required for every zoning district and limit that to twenty-five percent of lot area. In addition, the article also... In addition, it also modifies section seven point one point sixteen by adding the reference to the stormwater management bylaw, chapter one fifty-nine, one fifty-nine rules and regulations, so that the planning board can enforce the stormwater bylaw as part of their process. When we adopted one fifty-one as a general bylaw, we should have referenced it. So these are two housecleaning items.
You all set, Bill?
That's item A, yes. That's, that's number A.
Okay. All right, just one moment, please. He said A. Yeah, we're on forty, right?
Correct.
So you said A. I don't, I'm not following you. Am I, am I mistaken or we're off one? Okay, we're on Article forty, I believe. Yeah, we're on Article forty. Just for clarification, Article forty.
I, I just, I was just going over item A. I'll go over the, the rest of them. Okay, item B.
I think you're reading forty-one. Where on Article forty? Unless my book is wrong. It's just, all there is is a motion. Page sixty-two, Article four zero. Right at the top of the book.
This is forty. That's what we're doing. Forty minutes down here, the ABC.
I have forty. One moment, please.
Yep, forty, that's when we want to vote. Okay, that's when we need to vote now. Forty minutes, one, two, three.
The motion was read on Article forty by Peter Murphy and seconded by Elliot Hanson. So we're on forty.
I, okay.
Is there an A?
In, in the, in book two, there's, it's broken out in A, B, and C. So I apologize.
It's in book two? Okay, I didn't hear the reference on that.
Yeah.
Okay. You want to say it's fine? Okay, it's, he's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, Article forty-one is in A, B, and C. I'm on Article forty. So, okay. Yeah, it's in, it's in booklet two. Apologize.
That's okay. You're pervall, that's okay. We're following, though.
Item B is to revise the aquifer protection bylaw to comply with mass DEP protection regulations. The town current bylaw is based on a nineteen ninety-three study the town conducted prior to the state aquifer protection regulations. Since then, the state has adopted aquifer protection regulations and has provided detailed mapping. This bylaw will bring the town into compliance with state regulations. Item C of Article forty is to remove the wetlands bylaw out of zoning. The town adopted this bylaw prior to the State Wetlands Protection Act. Since then, the state has adopted, back in the mid, mid-seventies, Wetlands Protection Act, which allows the Conservation Commission to pass a general bylaw for wetlands protection, which the town has done, and it's a general bylaw, chapter one ninety-one. When chapter one ninety-one was adopted, the town should have removed the wetlands bylaw out of zoning because it overlaps the law and it is in conflict with state and local bylaws. So it's more of a housecleaning item. Item D, the purpose of the bylaw amendment for item D is to, for the town to adopt the new FEMA floodplain maps, which will allow the town property owners to be able to have flood insurance. In addition, it replaces the old floodplain bylaw with the newly required state and federal model floodplain bylaw. This amendment has been reviewed by MEMA, which is Mass Emergency Management Agency, and is in compliance with state regulations. So that's an overview of all four of the sections.
Thank you, Bill. All right, any technical questions on Article forty? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on. Pro and con debate. I see nobody rising. That's fine. Okay. It's a two-thirds vote, Bill. I'm, I'm not going to ask you for a summary, okay, since you handle that very well.
Two-thirds.
All right. Are we ready to vote? Two-thirds is needed. Please vote now. Yes, excuse me, one is yes, two no, three disdain. Voting is now open. Okay, Article forty passes, one twenty-two yes, nine no, two abstentions. Thank you all for voting. All right, just below, halfway down the page is Article forty-one, zoning map zone amendments. Mr. Murphy, can you make the motion for us, please?
Yeah, the motion is that the town to vote on the amended, let me start again. That the town vote to amend the town of Stoughton zoning bylaw and zoning map as amended through May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and rezone the following. Do you want me to read all these, or do you want Bill to go over that? It's going to be redundant.
Do we have to read that? Can we just say as printed in the warrant?
As printed in the warrant.
As printed in the warrant, sounds good. All right. Let me ask for a second. Who's seconding it down here? Becca, I'm Oxton. Thank you, Becca. Let me just read the Municipal Regulations Committee report. They voted eight zero zero to approve and recommend the town meeting Article forty-one as written in the warrants. Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Reggie, could you put up the map? It's a colored map. Okay, okay, great. That's figure one. As I, when I first started two years ago, I promised that we would be updating the map. These are all housecleaning map issues. What we're looking at doing, this is up on Sharon Street and Old Central Avenue, where approximately where that new Dunkin' Donuts is being built. As you see, we're taking the parcel, two residential parcels that have a portion that is own business, their backyard. We're moving that zoning line back to the, to the property line, so the residence is all zone business. And then there are several properties that, if you see up on top with the pink, they're half and half. They're businesses and half of their property is zone business and the other half, like their parking lot, is zone residential. So if you look on the back, on the lower one, we're moving the zoning line to the property line on those businesses. So where their parking lot and their actual business is all zone business. So that's what we're doing on, looking at doing on the first one. Reggie, can you go to the second one? Oh, I can use the clicker? Okay, didn't know that. This is the, and also the same thing. What we're looking at doing is there are two properties along Phillips Avenue that are split between the RC and the RU zone. And in order to look at, you know, better utilizing the properties, we are looking at moving the RU zone to the, to the right and going for the entire piece of property. So you can see on the bottom, it will just be moving. You can see where it goes from the RU and then where the RC zone is. And then the next one. On Park Street, between Fifth and Fourth, there is an old industrial piece of property. There's actually a house and then I think they called it the, it was, I think, a furniture factory or something. I'm sure the historic and, they made overcoats. And Twinkie, Twinkie Factory. What we're looking at doing is, we're looking at getting rid of that spot industrial zone. It just does not need to be in the middle of a, of a residential area. And since there is a business in nature, we're moving the general business zone, which is adjacent on Fifth Street, we would be moving it over. So we're getting rid of the industrial zone. It's a spot zone. And we're looking at, you know, having, you know, getting rid of any of those potential industrial uses that are kind of, you know, in that neighborhood. We've held public hearings on everything. All property owners within three hundred feet of every, of the three RE zones were all noticed, and the planning board recommended approval. And there was no objection. And I'm, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Mr. Scardino? Oh, can someone hand him the microphone? Please, please and thank you.
Joe Scardino, precinct one. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town planner. Were there any projects that inspired or this particular zoning change in front of the planning board?
No, there, there are no projects. They actually, some of the property owners have come to us about looking at rezone, but they have, there are no potential projects.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Anybody else with technical questions? Mr. Lurie?
David Lurie, precinct six. The business that's inside the industrial part, that's the old Twinkie?
Yeah.
Facility, is there any business operating in there now?
The, the, the woman who owns it, I think uses it as, well, at one point, I believe she had people in there that were utilizing it, but code enforcement got, got them out because they were doing outdoor storage and, and a lot of different things, and there were some fire code violations. I believe she uses it as storage for her business. And I think it's like rehab windows and other things. So she's really just using it as storage right now.
So is she in favor of this change as well?
She is, she, yes, she is. She actually approached the planning board on this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other technical questions? Seeing none. Let's go to pro and con debate. Any pro and con debate? Seeing none. This is zoning, so requires two-thirds vote. Are we ready to vote? Let me know. We're good? Okay, we're good to vote. Please vote now. Requires two-thirds. Okay, Article forty-one passes, one twenty-five yes, six no, five abstentions. All right, let's move on, right to the three-quarters of the page. Down on page sixty-three is Article forty-two, zoning bylaw, accessory, accessory dwelling units bylaw. And for the motion, we have Mr. Murphy?
That the town vote to amend the chapter two hundred of the town Stoughton zoning bylaw as set forth in a document entitled two, twenty twenty-five, proposed accessory dwelling units zoning bylaw, on file with the town clerk's office and included in the apex here too.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Thank you. Let me read the municipal regulations report. They voted eight zero zero to approve and recommend the town meeting as Article forty-two as written in the warrants. Mr. Roth, presentation, please, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The text of the warrant is in book two, starts on page two ninety-two. This past summer, the state passed legislation that allows accessory dwelling units, we call them ADUs, as of right. The town cannot prohibit them, but can reasonably regulate them. This bylaw sets up the process for the town so we can regulate, review, and provides guardrails for the town in dealing with this, providing approving ADUs. And I'm here to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Vaughn?
Thank you.
Did you want to?
Yes, thank, thank you very much.
Make a motion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, for recognizing me. I have an amended motion for Article forty-two. I understand that is, it is in less than the forty-eight hours required, so I'm hereby, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, to allow a motion to be put on the floor with, under the forty-eight hour requirement. Would you like to hear the amended motion before?
Motion. Who's seconding that? Carolyn Campbell, second it? Okay. Motion to suspend the rules, rules, requires two-thirds vote.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so right now, I'm going to do it by voice vote. Let's see if we can get it through. All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. All right, please make your amended motion for the record.
I move to amend the main motion for Article forty-two as follows, that section seven point two point three be stricken and replaced with the following, quote, seven point two point three, number of accessory dwelling units. There shall be no more than one ADU per lot, end quote.
Okay, I need a second on that, right?
Second.
Seconded by Scott Carrara. Did you want to make a quick presentation on that?
Yes, I, I would just like to point out that there's no real, in the zoning, there are no limitations. So this was an attempt to put some sort of guardrail or limitation on, on this, on this section for ADUs. The state, by right, allows one. And after that, I think it's up to, to the town, and I'd like to leave that to this body. So my motion is to the, there shall be no more than one ADU per lot. And if down the road, the town sees that it needs to adjust that, it could adjust that in the future. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, let's just see if we can get that on the screen. Just give us a moment. Yep, give us a couple of minutes. I just want to give everybody clarification while we're waiting for the motion to get up on the screen. An amended motion is just a simple majority. Even though it's a zoning article, it's just an amended motion, simple majority.
Is, is there?
Yeah. Then we go back to the main motion as amended. Yeah, then we go back to the main motion as amended, what, you know, if this amendment passes, it'll become a two-thirds vote required. We can go over that again. I'm hearing some phones go off. All right. We can allow a little bit of debate on this, if anybody's... Are we ready to vote? I don't see anything up there.
On the amended motion?
Yeah, questions?
I have a question on the amended motion.
Sure, go right ahead. Identify yourself, please.
Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. Does the state law allow such a restriction? Through you, Mr. Moderator, whoever can answer it?
Yeah, I'll ask the town council if you can answer that.
Mr. Moderator, through you, to the Speaker. The state went through a number of revisions to the regulations. The latest and final regulation reads as follows. Notwithstanding 760 CMR, 71, if a municipality chooses to allow additional ADUs, as protected use ADUs, it shall do so by special permit. So you can restrict the number to one. You don't have to allow an additional one, but if you do, it's by special permit.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
And you have to allow one, according to state law?
He says yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up is, I believe, Ani, you were next? Jonah. Okay, all right. Jonah, please identify yourself. You have to speak up? Pull that microphone down.
Jonah Rosenblatt, Precinct Seven.
Can everybody hear?
No.
You have to speak a little louder.
Jonah Rosenblatt, Precinct Seven. I wanted to ask, it states here that one of the accessory dwelling units, one of the purposes is to facilitate housing production, diversity, and affordability in the town's neighborhoods. What is the diversity that you plan to have in the?
I'm not sure if people can hear you, Jonah. You're gonna have to maybe...
I did, and it fell out.
There you go.
Is this better?
Much better.
Yay. Okay. Under the accessory dwelling units, it says one of the purposes is to facilitate housing production, diversity, and affordability in the town's neighborhoods. What is the, what is the diversity aspect that you're trying to achieve? Like?
Well, this is on the...
Technical, oh, it's on the motion still?
It's on the amended motion.
Okay, I went into the...
Yeah, you went onto the main motion.
Sorry.
This is just on the amended motion.
Gotcha.
Which is to add that clause in there.
That's fine.
Okay. You want to just hold that question for later?
Yep.
Okay. Ani, did you have a question on the amended motion?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm gonna need guidance.
I can't hear you. What?
I'm not sure, but I'm gonna need guidance. If we have one unit, what is the limitation on size and height of it?
I, I, I'm not qualified to answer that. Let me see if we can get an answer. Bill, will you be able to answer that?
Yeah, I can. You, could you please repeat the question?
What is the limitations on the size of the ADU and its height? How many stories can it be?
Okay, the state law says that an ADU can be 50% of the size of the principal dwelling with a maximum ADU size of 900 square feet. So every house, any house that's 1,800 and square feet or greater could have a 900-square-foot ADU. Anything, any house that's under 1,800 square feet, it would be half of the square footage. So if you had a 1,500-square-foot house, you could have a maximum size of an ADU of 750 square feet.
So if they're within the limits of, if they're within the limits of the square feet, could they put on a second story as long as they're within that limit?
You can add an ADU, you can add it attached, so you could convert a basement, or you could convert a portion of your house above, let's say you have an attached garage, above the garage. You have to meet building code requirements. If you wanted to add a story, as long as you, if you had a, you know, a 1,500-square-foot ranch, you could only add a 750-square-foot second-story addition, but you still have to meet all of the building code requirements.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Is it Noah?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
Yes. Noah Beetha-Harone, Precinct Six. This is still technical questions on the amendment, yes.
Yeah, amended.
Yeah. If I may ask, Mr. Inokian, what is the purpose in, in us limiting the number of ADUs per lot to one, when my understanding of the, of the original article is that, is just to set up sort of a board for deciding how many would be allowed per lot?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Inokian.
I also wanted to identify myself earlier. Von Inokian, Precinct Four. The, this bylaw does not set up a board to determine that. That's not what the purpose of this bylaw is. So, that can answer your question.
I'm misunderstanding on my...
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. This bylaw does not set up a board that approves ADUs, but thank you for the opportunity to answer.
Okay, thank you.
But, I'm sorry, you still didn't answer my primary question, which was why limit it to one per lot?
Because that's the state minimum requirement. The state mandates that you must have at least one. By right, you can have one. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
The state requirement is that you allow one by right. After that, it's up to the, up to the town, and I'd like to leave it in the hands of the town meeting here. So the purpose would be to have a number, to limit it to the state minimum. That's, that's my purpose, to start at one.
Right, okay.
And then going forward, if the town says, oh, we really wish we had more, then this body can come back here and say whatever that new number may be. This sets a number. Otherwise, there is no, there is no number anywhere in the zoning bylaw that sets any number.
So it would require a change by this body?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
No back and forth. I think he answered your question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Becca, did you have a question? Mr. Terry? No? All right. You're on the main motion, right? That's what you want to talk about. Okay. So I think we're ready to vote the amendment? Do we have any pro and con debate? I didn't see anybody rise. You have pro and con debate? Could you give Mr. Scardino the microphone?
Joe Scardino, Precinct One. I'm against this amendment. This bylaw is well drafted. It includes all kinds of restrictions for setbacks, and so you're not going to populate a tiny lot with lots of 900-square-foot ADUs. Number two is, once you go beyond one, you're in the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit. There's a great deal of discretion involved with the approval of those. Now, I certainly trust that, I was 15 years on the planning board and worked closely with the zoning board, and I certainly would trust their ability with the setbacks. You're not going to have two or three ADUs on a tiny lot. I think there's already a lot of restrictions in the bylaw as presented and drafted by both the planning board and the town planner, and I will be voting against the amended, the amendment to this bylaw.
Thank you. Anybody else? Pro and con debate? Trying to move along. Identify yourself.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. I am wholeheartedly for this amendment. This, this is a new law in Massachusetts, and before we, this gives us a chance to see what's going to happen here in town, and it sets a limit, and as a previous speaker said, we could always come back and add more. So I am for this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Pro and con?
Noah Beetha-Harone.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's on.
Not yet. Okay, that sounds on.
Perfect.
Noah Beetha-Harone, Precinct Six, again. I'd like to speak against this amendment. It seems to me that the purpose of the amendment is to restrict the amount of housing and changes to our property that we are allowed to do in the town. I trust the gentleman in the front row, who said that he approves of the, of the way the, the original article was drafted, and I think that requiring this body to then vote again in order to allow someone with a large lot to build a second, I'm sorry, ADU? LDU? I forget what the...
ADU.
ADU. On, on their, on their property just seems like a way to make it harder on ourselves to create new in-law apartments and, you know, whatever. And I don't see why we would put that restriction on ourselves and require this body to come back and vote again just in order to change it again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else pro and con debate? If you're gonna have pro and con debate, please rise. Get to the microphones now. Go ahead, Eric.
I'm a pro on this one.
Okay.
You have to consider both the person that's going to have this unit in their property and also their neighbors, so we're protecting the neighbors more than the person whose house is being changed. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else rising. All right, I think we're ready to vote. This is the amended motion, simple majority to pass the motion, if you so desire. Let me know. Are we ready? Please vote now. Okay, on the amended motion, looks like it's 78, yes. 54, no. Three abstentions. That motion passes. That's the amended motion passes. 78, 54, 3. Okay, now we're back to the main motion. It's called Main Motion As Amended. Okay, Main Motion As Amended. And since that's the main motion, it requires, after we get through the technical questions debate, two-thirds majority. All right, okay. Jonah?
So I can ask the question?
Yes.
Okay.
This is on the main motion as amended.
On the main, okay. I'm with the amended, okay. It says under the accessory dwellings, dwelling units, that the purpose is to facilitate housing production, diversity, and affordability in the town's neighborhoods. What has diversity got to do with it? How come it's not based on need?
Okay. Sure, Bill, go ahead. You can answer that.
Through you.
Is this on?
Oh, there we go. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Roth, Town Planner. It's not diversity of people. This is, this comes from the state statute on the purpose of the ADU, and it's diversity of housing types. So there's single-family, multifamily, and so this is, this is talking about different types of housing types. Has nothing to do with people, strictly, it's, it's housing types.
Let him answer your question before you move on, okay?
I'm sorry, okay. And then I have a second question. It says also under that same paragraph, "to provide a mechanism for development of range of housing types that are responsive to the socio-culture, health..." No, 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 that's the wrong one. Never mind. "It was to use energy, water, and materials more efficiently by increasing the housing supply through concentrated small-scale development." What is concentrated small-scale development precisely?
What is small-scale development?
Well, in regard to energy and water to be used more efficiently.
Okay, I, I think I've got that, too.
Sounds like, sounds like you're asking two questions to me. Is that one question?
No, I started to ask one, and I was on the wrong one, so I went and reverted back to the right one.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I can answer, Mr. Moderator, through you. That section of the purpose talks about, it's really, that's a standard of what we call infill development. Utilizing our resources, utilizing the energy, water, materials, roads, is instead of taking raw land, like forests, and developing it and building roads, this, ADUs, are utilizing existing built property. So, so it's infill development, and it's utilizing, so you already have the roads, the water, the sewer, you know, we're not doing a subdivision where we accept a mile more of roads, and that's even more maintenance for us. So that's what, that's what that section of purpose is.
So that, that achieves better efficiency, you're saying?
Yes.
You already asked two questions.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Terry?
Richard Terry, Precinct Eight. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Town Planner. This, how does this law affect the setbacks, both front, rear, and sidelines?
In our bylaw, we're proposing that you cannot put an ADU in front of the principal dwelling. So we don't want an ADU built in front of the house, and then we're looking at, since it's an accessory use, we've kind of, the planning board really split the difference. Instead of having the, we're looking at 10-foot side yard setbacks and 15-foot rear yard setbacks. An accessory garage allows five and five. This is more than that, and it also, by building code, has to be 10 feet from, detached, I'm talking about detached, has to be 10 feet from the principal dwelling. If a ADU is built as an addition to a house, it has to comply with the setbacks of the dwelling, of the principal dwelling.
My second question, Mr. Moderator, through you, to the Town Planner, is, in situating an ADU, and it casts shadows onto the neighbor's garden, how will that be handled? Because that's a serious infraction or imposition to the neighbor.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The setbacks actually are greater than, you can build a two-car garage five feet from the side and five feet from the rear. So you can build a story and a half garage, five feet from the property line, from the side and the rear. So, you know, there was nothing, we didn't do anything with creating shadows. Actually, by pulling them further back, you know, we're lessening that impact than, than you currently can do under the law for an accessory building or shed.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Is it Cheryl?
Yep.
Please identify yourself in the precinct.
Cheryl Iverson, Precinct One. In the bylaw, it talks about attached and detached ADU, but in a lot of the state guidance, they've talked about a third category, internal ADUs, like converting a basement to an apartment. Is that intended to be covered in this bylaw as well?
Yes, yes, that's, that's part of the thing. That would be, yeah, you can convert a basement.
Second question. Should these ADU rules also be applied to Section 9.3 on the Stoughton Center District? Because some single residential units are allowed within that special zoning area.
The, we took the position that the Stoughton Center District, only one of the districts allows single, single-family, and it also allows, all of the districts allow multifamily. So we looked at, ADU could be, they allow duplex, they allow two families, and they allow multifamilies. So we've taken the position that in the Stoughton Center District, if you wanted to provide an ADU, that would just go under the multifamily, more than one unit per, on the, on the lot. So, you know, the Attorney General might not agree with us, but that's, that's the way we've taken the position.
Thank you both. Scott Carrara, please identify yourself.
Scott Carrara, Precinct Two. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the Town Engineer, because there's a lot of questions being asked around on the utilities. Are the utilities going to be allowed to be into the house, into the existing and out, or is it going to have to be a separate connection out, out to the source so that you don't? to be, um, a separate connection out, out to the sewer so that you don't have a problem that we've been trying to rectify in town where some houses have split and the utilities are still running, the sewer and water is still coming in? Are they gonna be separate? Or how's that gonna work?
Can I answer your question, Scott? Um, it's a good question. Uh, the utilities have to be in compliance with what the building code requires. And it's not gonna be something that you and I necessarily agree with on how we would do it with separate utilities or, or things like that, because that doesn't necessarily, um, that's not necessarily a requirement of the building code. Um, I think right now, if you go on the public forums, there's a lot of people asking that same question. I think as time goes on, they may clarify the intent of the utilities. Right now, they're more focusing on the structure itself, and then the utilities are afterwards.
So we're, we're gonna allow these things, but we don't know whether the utilities are gonna go into the mainframe house and through? Are they gonna attach to that? It, that's, that's what's the whole hit up. Because it's ten feet from the building. Some of them might go even farther out from the building. And I, it, I'm getting the questions now. What do, what do they require? And what's, I, I have no idea.
Right. Yeah, so it's gotta comply with the building code, and that's the only thing that, that-
Well, the building code doesn't drive you and me on the other end.
Please don't, don't cross the debate.
It's not. It's information that's gotta get out here that, that fits this bylaw.
Unfortunately, the state hasn't given guidance on utilities just yet. It's just the building code. Uh, so we're using our best judgment and our standards that we've implied over time right now. Uh, and usually, those standards also help people when they're, when they're developing a piece of property, makes it more cost-effective, more, you know, cheaper for them.
The only, the only thing I was worried about is if there's gonna be grade changes in some of these lots, and you're probably looking at sewer ejectors going to a house.
Yeah, and you got, you got water lines going from one house to another, and, and we, we're aware of all that, and we're, we're trying to deal with it on the case by Jason Murray.
Thank you both. All right. Any more? Becca, please identify yourself, please.
Becca Marks in Precinct Seven. Um, through you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Bill, if we vote no, if the body votes no, this is still a state law, correct?
Yes.
So state law supersedes. We're just trying to put in additional rules?
We're just putting in reasonable regulations. If you vote this down, um, the building, when somebody applies for an ADU, the building contractor will look at state law, which, you know, is always so well-written and very detailed and can follow very clearly. Um, and, um, he will have to strictly follow state law. And, um, and one of the issues that I'm worried about when we did this is he would look and say, "Well, it's accessory", and he would have to go with the five-foot rear and side. This, you know, puts in the, you know, a gra, a, a greater setback. It's, it's less than the principal dwelling, but greater than a shed. We felt that the middle, so that's kind of, if you vote it down, then he just has to rely on state law.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other technical questions? Seeing none? Let's- Okay, when you get to the p, the microphone, please identify yourself.
Peter in Tresco. Peter in Tresco, Precinct Eight. Uh, the question I have is, if there's an obot lo, lot, like solely say, fifty feet wide, today you can't do anything with it? Could somebody buy that lot and put one of these houses in? And the house could be twenty-five feet front to back, and whatever the length, and you'd still have a fifteen and a ten-foot s, sides, uh, setbacks?
Um, so you're saying, building an ADU on a vacant piece of property?
Yeah.
That is not allowed. You have to have a principal dwelling.
All right.
Okay, thank you both. Let's move on to pro and con debate. I don't see anybody rising, so I gotta ask, uh, Town Council just a clarification on the, uh, the quantum of vote here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just through you to the meeting, uh, just a very quick clarification. Although zoning is normally two-thirds, when the MBTA Communities Act was passed, it added a number of exceptions under forty A five, which is zoning adoption. And one of them is for multifamily housing or mixed-use development or accessory dwelling units. So that's an exception to the two-thirds vote. It's actually a majority vote. So I just wanted to make that clear, uh, to the meeting and for you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Winner. Okay, uh, so it is a simple majority on this vote, okay? We're ready to vote? Okay, please vote now. One, two, or three? Okay, Article forty-two passes. One seventeen yes, thirteen no, two abstentions. All right, let's move on. Yeah, one seventeen yes, thirteen no, two abstentions on that one. Thank you. All right, we're on page sixty-four, Article forty-three. I believe this is Mr. Murphy again.
Zoning bylaw, short-term rental bylaw. Proposed motion that the town vote to amend the Chapter two hundred of the town's Stoughton zoning bylaw as set forth in the document entitled Twenty Twenty-Five Proposed Short-Term Rental Zoning Bylaw on file with the town's clerk's office and included in the Apex Ero.
Okay, Carolyn Campbell, second to that. Thank you. Let me, let me read Municipal Regulations Committee report. They voted seven, one, zero, to accept and recommend the town meeting Article forty-three as written in the warrant. Mr. Bill Roth, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, the main text is in Appendix Two of the book, uh, and it starts on page two ninety-nine. Um, currently, the town has no rules or regulations on where or how a person can have a short-term rental, which is commonly known as an Airbnb rental. This bylaw sets up a process for how the town can regulate and review them, requires a special permit, so they are not permitted as of right, and it will provide some necessary guardrails for the town in dealing with issues that we are currently facing, um, through code enforcement and, and other things. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Bill. Technical question period. Anybody for technical questions? Mr. Lenahan?
John Lenahan, Precinct One. Um, what are the issues you're dealing with?
Um, we've had some neighborhood complaints, um, regarding them. They came, one person came and tried to come in front of the zoning Board of Appeals to, you know, seek approval for it, and there's no mechanism for. So this sets up a public hearing process, special permit, uh, Board of Appeals reviews it, notice to all the abutters. It talks about, um, the operations, la, you know, noise, different things. Uh, you can't use it as wedding venues and, um, function centers, 'cause some people are do, you know, some things, you know, we're having some problems with that, too. So, um, so that's kind of where we're looking at, you know, trying to regulate this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Anybody else with technical questions? Mr. Kirby?
Robert. Robert Kirby, Precinct Six. Is there a minimum bar for something to be considered under this domain? For example, if, if somebody just swaps their house with some, like, uh, B and B thing once or twice a year, like vacation swapping homes or something, do they fall under this, uh, or is it, you have to rent it out more than, say, six weeks a year or some, what's the metric for that?
The house, ha, a house swapping, uh, issue, that's not, um, that's not covered under this. This is, this is covered, um, the definition of it is defined in state law. And, and that's within the, um, the bylaw itself, that, let's see if I can find the, where the, it's, um, uh, short-term rental use regulations, let's see, definition. Um, short-term rental means "any rental of all or part of a dwelling unit rented out throughout the use of advanced reservation for a fee for a period of not more than thirty-one consecutive calendar days, uh, excluding hotels licensed under master general law, um, motels under master general law, and lodging establishments." You, so it's, it's if you meet this definition. So typically, a house swap, you're not renting it, you're actually swapping it. So.
So, but it, it still sounds like, this is my second question. It still sounds like if you were getting money exchange for this, uh, leasing of your home, and it was under thirty-one days, even if it was a one-off, you'd still be subject to these bylaws?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Uh, next up is Lisa Lyons.
Yeah, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. I'm just looking for clarification on something you just said earlier. When you said somebody came before the zoning board and we didn't have a mechanism for it, what would be the, what was the result in that instance? If there's no mechanism, what happens?
Um, well, when the zoning board appeals heard it, they actually had the applicant withdraw it, because I was actually in the process of writing this bylaw. Um, he was trying to request, uh, you know, some sort of permit that we didn't have to legitimize it, and the zoning board appeals had no way to approve it, review it, or, or, you know, they, they had no way to deal with it. So.
So we just ask somebody to just hold off until we have some regulations around this?
What was rather ironic, I was in the midst of writing the bylaw. I was actually at that zoning board of appeals meeting, presenting something else, and, and that, and I told them. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Becca Moxton?
Becca. Becca Marks in Precinct Seven, two questions. Do you know how many Airbnbs we currently have in Stoughton?
Um, no, I don't, but if you have a phone, you can, um, get on there. I, I know that the zoning enforcement officer, when we looked at it, you know, um, there were, I, I think there were at least a, at that point, and that was just Airbnb, not VBRO and the other ones. And I think there was, I think there, you know, I think about a dozen or so came up. We were surprised.
And then my second question is, do you think that this bylaw will help or hinder people who want to Airbnb or VRBO their properties?
Well, s, s, depends on what side you sit on. Um, if you sit on thinking that any regulation hinders you, then obviously it will hinder them. So if they're operating now, we don't know about it, and then, you know, then this will hinder them. W, we really took the position, and, and one of the other things is, and one of the reasons we did this is, within the state statute for what we talked about, the ADUs, it says, this is, you know, exempt from, you know, short-term rentals is defined in master general law. And then, so if somebody comes and says, "Well, I can't do it as an AD, rent it as an Airbnb, where can I do it?" You know, well, you know, we don't have any regulations set up, and they just set up, and they just do it, and we don't know about it. And then it becomes a code enforcement. So we really took a proactive approach and said, "We need to define it. We need to set up a process. It's not as of right, special permit, and public hearing, and the neighbors that are within three hundred feet, that are directly affected, they need to, you know, they need to weigh in on this." So, you know, so we looked at it as, you know, it's, it's protecting the neighborhoods that, where these are. S, sometimes, and sometimes neighbors will have no problems. They go, "Oh, they've operated for three years and, 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 you know, it just takes, takes, you know, we'll, we'll take another bylaw." It just takes one noise complaint from one of these things, and, you know, then it goes, goes downhill. So we took the position of, of protecting the neighborhoods, and let's be proactive, and let's regulate this.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you both. All right, any other technical questions? Seeing none? Pro and con debate? Matt?
Matthew Callas, Precinct Three. I, I don't like this, because it seems overly broad to me. It puts together the guy that's renting his house full-time as an Airbnb with the person that might do it, one weekend every few years. I, I saw a very similar amendment to this, uh, passed in Winterp several years ago. And what you got then is only people with businesses, and suddenly they had a path towards their business. It didn't decrease our Airbnbs, it increased them, and it increased them with people that did it full-time, and it shut down everybody that just wanted it for a weekend here or there, when they were going away to make a few extra dollars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else pro and con? All right, seeing none? All right, um, two-thirds? It's a two-thirds vote. Are we ready to vote? All right, please vote now. One, two, or three? Okay, Article forty-three passes. Ninety-nine yes, thirty-two no, three abstentions. Thank you all for voting. The vote was ninety-nine yes, thirty-two no, three abstentions. All right, let's move on, the middle of the page, Article forty-four, Noise Bylaw. Mr. Cavy, could you read the motion, please?
Sure thing. Sorry, just took a moment to find the, the proposed motion. Uh, the town vote, I, I moved that the town vote to amend the town's bylaws by, uh, adding a new Chapter one thirty-seven entitled Noise, and a new Chapter two sixty-six entitled Engine Braking as Set Forth in the Warrant.
Okay. I'm sorry, George, you second it? All right, let me read the Municipal Regulations Committee report. It's a little lengthy. Voted eight, zero, zero to disapprove recommending Article forty-four to town meeting. Their comment was, in Section one thirty-seven dash four, "The committee disagreed with the time restriction period of seven PM to seven AM, and seven PM is too early in the summer. The committee recommended the restriction period should be ten PM to seven AM. Also in Section one thirty-seven dash five, the first offense should be a warning and not a fine. And one mi, one member wanted to consider other businesses that may be affected." All right, thank you. All right.
Mr. Moderator?
I wanna hear the, uh, presentation first, then we can go to you. All right, and the presentation will be, is it, Mr. Tisdale?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager. We pulled names out of the hat. I was the lucky one to, uh, present this article. So, um, uh, this is, this article is a result of various complaints through the Selectmen, uh, through the Building Department, through the Police Department for years now, uh, about things like loud, loud parties at certain times in the early morning, late at night, uh, the use of power tools early in the morning, five in the morning, things like that, and the use of jake breaks. Um, those are the three subjects that they were getting complaints. Uh, there was various meetings at the Selectmen vetting this, uh, the language on this article, with a lot of consultation through our Town Council. And again, just to recap, this, essentially, this, this bylaw gives us some guardrails to actually enforce when it comes to, uh, to actually enforce when it comes to the noise in town. Right now, we don't have anything. It'll address loud noises, music, and sound-making devices, that's the first thing. Those items can be enforced Sunday through Thursday, ten PM to seven AM, and then Friday, Saturday, and federal holidays, eleven PM to seven AM. The power tools, the logic, the power equipment, things like that, are eighth, um, I'm sorry, there's going to be an amendment, but right now it's written in the warrant, seven PM to seven AM every day of the week, and then jake breaks town-wide except for emergency situations. The article will be enforced by our building department, co-enforcement manager, or the police department, both have equal powers on this. There will be fines, the first fine will be, will be amended, there'll be a warning in place first through an amendment coming, then there'll be a hundred-dollar fine, two-hundred-dollar fine, and a three-hundred-dollar fine in the fall for the third, second, third, and fourth offenses. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Just for the body, body will know, we have a, we have a couple amended motions on this. One was filed on time, one wasn't. Mr. Murphy, do you rise to make your amended motion? Please identify yourself.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. To amend the motion, as stated, previously stated, fourth, and what I'm going to do is, the first part of it is one thirty-seven dash four and restrictions, and then the restrictions, it was every day from seven PM to seven AM. I'm moving that it goes to eight-thirty PM to seven AM. And then the second part, one thirty-seven dash five enforcement, the first offenses will be a written warning, the second offense will be a one-hundred-dollar fine, the third offense will be a two-hundred-dollar fine, the fourth, uh, sequential offenses will be three-hundred dollars. That's the, my motion.
All right, it's seconded by Eric Coleman. Okay, let's hear some technical questions on the amended motion now, we're talking about the amendment. Okay, it should be up on the screen. And obviously, it's redlined, so the red is the changes he's proposing in the amended motion. All right, any technical questions?
Do I make any presentation?
Uh, I thought you did.
No, I just read what the amendment, what my amendment was.
Yeah, but you just discussed your amendment.
Okay.
That's your presentation.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I would think. Carolyn Campbell?
Hi, Carolyn. Carolyn Campbell, precinct four. I have a question, I guess it's on the amendment and on the regular, with the offenses, could somebody theoretically go through, like, three of those offenses in the same night? So, like, there's a party, there's a warning, an hour later, it's the first offense, it's an hour later, it's the second offense. I've known some parties like that in the past, so that's why I'm asking.
I believe that would have to be up to the police department, how they enforce it.
Thank you.
All right, any other technical questions?
I have a.
This is on the amendment only. Noah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. Noah Betarone, precinct six. I have sort of a technical question for you, Mr. Moderator, because I, since we have two maybe competing or maybe aligned amendments presented on this, and we're considering the first, I'm just, I'm not sure, if we pass the first, does it stop us from considering the second? If we don't pass the first, does it stop, like, I'm, how does this work?
Yeah. Well, I'll have the town council explain. Now, you didn't make, you didn't make the other amendment, did you?
No.
Okay. Town council, yeah, if you could explain that.
So, Mr. Moderator, through you, there's only one motion on the floor now, and whether it's successful or defeated, that doesn't prevent another motion to amend. There can be what's called, you know, a secondary or a tertiary motion to amend, if you will, and there's nothing stopping anyone from making that. So, if this passes, then we go back to the main motion as amended, and then someone could amend that again if they see fit to.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, just, no, just so you know, if we get to that other motion, it was filed late, so the body would have to suspend the rules, and then we can talk about that motion, if it passes, okay? All right, uh, next up was Lisa, I believe, Lisa Lyons?
Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So, this is a question to the moderator, so that if, if, because I don't know what the secondary amendment is, and I wanted to make one myself, when would be the proper time to do that?
For you to make amendment?
Uh, to suspend the rules, to make a secondary amendment?
We're going to hear this amendment first, because this was properly filed.
Okay, so just putting that out there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, if the maker of the other motion wants to get up, and they, and it might be the same time. Go through the process. All right. I believe John Anzavino, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Anzavino, precinct four. If I could, a, a question to the maker of the motion, on your path B, you wanted to make this from eight-thirty PM to seven AM. Would, would you give me your reason for that, and why it wouldn't be put at that time maybe more seasonably as far, instead of all year round?
By all means. To answer the question, at the municipal regulations meeting, as you read there, they've decided to vote against this, and that was their recommendation, excuse me, they wanted a later time. So, what happens is, I checked to see what was the latest sunset. The latest sunset on June twenty-ninth, I believe, is at eight-twenty-eight. So, I was trying to be accessible to municipal regulations to appease them. The other thing that I did was, because they said about the, the warnings and all that, again, to appease, excuse me, municipal regulations department. That's where my amendment comes from.
All right, well, thank you for your answer, I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Uh, next up is Dave Laurie.
Dave Laurie, precinct six. I was going to also ask that one question, my other question had to do with how you enforce this thing. Are we looking to just go to people who have complaints against them to start this enforcement process? Or are we proactively looking for people who are offending the decibels or whatever else they use to decide what the noise level should be?
Mr. Murphy?
The issue as far as decibels was, was reviewed during the process of making this article itself, and what happens is, I have a whole list of the history of this article. You don't want me to read this, we'll be here.
No, I just, I just simply want, I'm, just to reiterate my same question, and it's going to be my only question. I, I just want to understand, are we proactively looking for offenders, or do we only trigger this set of enforcements when there's a complaint to the town? Like, what is the, how do you evenly enforce this thing? I'm trying to understand that process.
Okay, I think to deal with the noise aspect of it, all right, there would have to be a complaint, A, to either the police department or the enforcement officer. So, a complaint would have to come in about that. The police, when they come to a party, they know a loud party, they've been around, so they know, they don't need a decibel meter. So, but when it comes to other noises, again, it could be subjective, but by the same token, if you have a complaint and someone comes to you, the enforcement officer, and, and mentions to you about your noise, most people are courteous.
Right, so, so what you're saying then is, and I'll reiterate, is that if somebody's above the noise level at the wrong time, and no one's complaining, they're likely not going to be bothered by this, by this law. We're not proactively saying, "We're noticing a noise, and we're coming after you because we noticed." It's going to be triggered by a complaint first.
If a tree falls in the forest, does it make noise?
That, thank you, appreciate that.
All right, let's move on. Mr. Feinberg?
Arnie Feinberg, precinct six. This is just a general question, and you answered part of it. I agree with most of this whole noise, um, regulation, but what happens with the Fourth of July, you've got the fireworks going on, what happens if you have a concert that's going on for, um, the people of Stoughton? That, that may run longer than eight-thirty. How are you going to cover that? And what happens if someone's just having an argument in their house? Is that going to be a noise, um, violation?
Okay, as, as far as the Fourth of July, the police department.
Can't hear you, Peter.
Can't hear you. As far as the Fourth of July, the police answer the calls, and where they came in, how they come in, and the severity of those calls, all right? That's up to the police department to handle that. As far as if there's an argument going on in the house, that's domestic violence, and again, the police would be called on that, and they can handle that. But that's not the type of noise this is pertaining to. So, you can still yell at your wife. Thank you.
Okay, let me just refocus the body here. This argument or discussion is on the amended motion, which is red line and red, color red up there. Those are the things we should be discussing, to change the motion to these items here. We're getting off on the main motion, which we're not really discussing at this point. It's, I know it's very similar, but we're just talking about these minor changes. Okay, so we really, I don't see anybody else, let's, let's vote the amendment. Let's vote on this. And it's majority, majority vote. Once it comes up on the screen, let me know. Simple majority. Okay, let's vote now, voting is now open, simple majority, one, two, or three. This is on the amended motion. Thank you. All right, the amended motion passes.
Mr. Moderator.
Excuse me, eighty-nine yes, thirty-one no, four abstentions. Who's asking?
Ms. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to introduce an amendment to the floor.
Okay, motion's been made to suspend the rules. It requires a two-thirds vote. I'm going to ask this from a voice vote, because it doesn't, I can't determine it. Is there a, who seconded that, by the way? Carolyn Campbell, just let me just make a note. Excuse me. Uh, is it?
Piper, oh, sorry. Piper Slonsky, precinct seven.
Thank you, Piper. Okay, and the motion to suspend the rules, which needs two-thirds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those oppose?
No!
Is doubt in the mind on the moderator? Yeah. We're going to have to, can we take a clicker vote? If we can set up quickly, otherwise I have to ask for a standing role. We're going to click it.
Mr. Moderator, do we have to know what the point of, or the argument for the amendment?
Piper? The reason to suspend the rules is to?
Sorry, the reason to suspend the rules is the amendment was submitted, it's on the virtual table, both submitted yesterday, not forty-eight hours in advance.
Right, so it's to hear your amendment.
It is, it was available, and is on the table out front, if people did not see a copy of it.
Okay, I'm just, I just want to hear the point of the suspension of the rules.
Oh, the point.
You just made it, thank you. We're good.
Okay.
Okay, this is on the motion to suspend the rules, it needs a two-thirds vote to pass. Please vote now. We lost the screen? Okay. Just bear with us for a moment or two. You're good? Okay, it's coming up on the screen, when it comes up. Okay, please vote now, this is, two-thirds required to, motion, this is on the motion to suspend the rules. Yeah, we have to vote again, motion to suspend the rules. All right, motion fails, not a clear two-thirds, seventy-seven yes, fifty-one no, four abstentions. I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me? All right, the motion to suspend the rules fails. Seventy-seven yes, fifty-one no, four abstentions. It's not a two-thirds vote, okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, Carolyn Campbell, precinct four, I just have a question. What would have been the number of votes needed to have it pass? What's the two-thirds?
A hundred and three, I'm told. Any math majors in here? There you go.
Um, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Piper?
Piper Slonsky, precinct seven, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the vote on this, um, Article forty-four to Monday, so it'll have been forty-eight hours, and we'll be able to hear the amendment. Yeah, table, table it to my, postpone to Monday, which is a fifty, well, mostly not to lay it on the table.
Okay, we need, okay, hang on a second, everybody. You have a motion to table this, this article?
To Monday.
Well, motion to table, then we'll deal with it on Monday.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, the reason, we, we could finish tonight, I don't know. Okay, so, the motion to table requires a two-thirds vote also.
Vote, uh, motion to lay it on the table, which people have to take it off as a two-thirds vote, I believe, Mr. Moderator, but to postpone a vote is a fifty percent majority vote, according to town meeting time.
So, you said table, so?
I said to postpone the vote on Article forty-four to Monday.
Okay, you want to post, that's your motion to postpone?
That's my motion, is to postpone, um, the vote on Article forty-four to Monday.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Hold on a second, we have a motion on the floor. Okay? What's the, uh, simple, okay, simple majority, let's set, set that up. Postpone, motion to postpone to Monday. Requires a simple majority?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Murphy, while we're waiting.
Point of interest.
It's not a, I don't have any point of interest.
A technical question, then. Right now, you have?
You have a point of order?
Point of order.
Okay.
Two orders for you. Anyways, you have a motion on the floor, the original motion that has been amended. The second amendment came in and failed. You have to vote on the first motion that has been amended.
Let me ask the town council to weigh in. He says no.
Okay.
Motion to postpone, I'm standing in for the town council right now, most, most, motion to postpone is a higher priority motion.
Point of order.
All right, we're just waiting to be set up here.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Eric, what's your point of order?
Uh, on the town meeting.
Nice and loud, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, on the town meeting rules of order, if I'm reading it correctly, in the back, it's looking for two-thirds, on, uh, references page one oh four, lay on table, two-thirds, am I reading that wrong? On, uh, references page one oh four, lay on table, two-thirds, am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, but it's a motion to postpone.
What's the difference?
Okay, we're gonna move forward with the vote here. Motion to postpone.
Oh, I see, no, nevermind, I take it back. Postpone is majority.
Okay, we good with that? Okay, are we ready?
Mr. Moderator, point of order. What would happen if we conclude all of the rest of the business tonight before ten-thirty? And we would adjourn early and then return on Monday if we moved to postpone this?
Can I ask the town council to weigh in on that?
Just like with laying on the table, if we postponed it to a time certain, and there is no town meeting on Monday, we're not gonna be able to adjourn this evening, because now we've got an article that's, uh, postponed to a date certain. And so, we're gonna have a meeting on Monday.
Thank you, I just want us all to understand what happens with that.
We need to go ahead with the motion.
I just, I have another question on the motion. If it is postponed, just without a date certain?
She said, the motion was postponed to Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's what we're gonna vote on. Let's just vote, okay? Simple majority. Please bring it up on the screen, let's vote now. Simple majority, one, two, or three? Voting is now open. Alright, motion to postpone fails. Fifty-two yes, seventy-four no, three extensions. Alright, now we're back to the amended, original amended motion. Correct? Okay, it's, it's labeled by the attorney, the main motion, as amended. Alright. Okay, we have pro and con debate?
No, I have a question.
You have a question? Well, we kinda talked about the question.
No, we didn't. We moved right past.
Alright, I just don't wanna...
I've been holding this question the whole time, because I never had a...
Okay, holding the question for a while. Don't, just don't ask the same question that was already asked.
No, I have a completely different question. Um, I, my question is, I hope you guys are listening. John Lenhin, Precinct One. Uh, my question is, the warning, the fines, et cetera, do they go, what if it's a rental property, for example? Do they go to the people making the noise, or do they go to the property owner?
I'll answer that question, I'll refer to our town council, since he wrote the bylaw. But I believe it goes to the, uh, the property owner. Brian, do you confer with that?
So?
That was your whole question?
It was a good question, thank you. Alright, Elliot Hanson?
Now, we're talking now about as amended.
Main motion as amended.
Thank you. And technical questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, inasmuch as this article, well, I'm talking subsection two sixty-six dash eighty-one, and that's the use of engine brakes, um, I don't believe, I believe this should be probably in its entirety taken out of the bylaw. Yes, engine braking sometimes is a problem for noise, but to interfere with the safety of drivers of trucks, um, you could put up signs like they do in Holbrook, uh, please no engine brakes, um, and leave it to the discretion of the drivers. But I don't believe it should be, and I certainly don't think it should be fined. If you're gonna have that, then you have to have a police officer there with a sound level meter, a recalibrated sound level meter, and actually see the offense occur, so. My amendment, I'm going to make the motion right now that we delete section two six-six dash eighty-one in its entirety.
Uh, nope, am I to rule you out of order? That could have been made a while back, forty-eight hours ago.
I didn't hear you.
That's a substiti, you have substantive information on that motion, so am I to rule you out of order? Should have put, please put it on writing and get it to me by email.
Alright.
Sorry about that, Elliot.
Okay. Okay, Karen Clip?
In the winter, a lot of people use their snow blower continuously overnight when there's a big storm. Will we be restricted on not, be able to use our snow blower during those hours in the winter?
Can we have an answer on that?
Yep. I believe that would be interpreted, interpreted as an emergency situation.
Also, in storms, certain people put their generators in front of their house. Will they be made to put them behind their houses to muffle the sound?
I, I would think that deserves the same response. That would be an emergency situation.
Thank you very much. Next up is Mr. John Rock.
Hi, John Rock, Precinct Three. Uh, I really don't have anything funny to say or anything like that, so, sorry. Uh, I just wanna commend, uh, Mr. Murphy for listening to the mighty Municipal Regulations Committee and, and amending, uh...
This is technical questions.
Oh, technical, okay.
You wanna come back later?
Uh, okay, I, well, I made my point, I wanna commend Mr. Murphy.
Okay, thank you, let's...
Yeah.
Alright, um, next up, Piper?
Piper Slonsky, Precinct Seven. Um, technical question, how, how does one define clearly, plainly audible? There are multiple places in here. The language of the noise is plainly audible at this, this is the noise is plainly audible. How does one define plainly audible?
Anybody answer that for her?
I believe that would be at the discretion of either the code enforcement officer or the police department.
Yes, it's up for individual interpretation, it could be interpreted differently by different individuals, I'm hearing.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
So you're, you're saying it's open for interpretation, different individuals could interpret plainly audible differently than other people?
It, it's, it's up to the interpretation of the person at the scene, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Paulo, go ahead, identify yourself, please.
Yep, Paulo Alves, Precinct One. Um, just a quick question. Will this apply to anyone or any organization that may have permitted a license through the town of Stoughton?
I'll refer that to our town council. Is that, I would think the license would supersede it, but I'll ask for Brian's opinion on that.
With your permission, Mr. Moderator? So, any permitted activity that receives a license, for example, from the select board, any establishment or business that's hosting a sanctioned event, that license could supersede this and specify what was allowable?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you both. Back here, could you identify yourself, please?
Lindsay Weber, Precinct Five. Can everyone hear me okay? Um, under one thirty-seven four B restrictions, it says any person seeking to emit noise in such a manner as prohibited may do so, uh, for a specific place and period of time from the select board. So, I frequently mow my parents' lawn, they're elderly and can't do it for themselves. Um, sometimes after work, it does have to happen around eight, eight-thirty. Um, so, is this a weekly petition? How often do I go about asking the select board to make noise during a specific period of time at a specific place? I feel like this would inundate the select board with requests.
Through, through you, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Murphy?
The way that this was presented was, it'll be from seven, eight, uh, between seven AM and ten PM, they would allow for potty noise. Are you referring to mechanical noise?
Uh, yes, it says no person shall operate a leaf blower, power tool, power equipment, um, chewing poi, to include trimming, uh, cutting or trimming of grass. So if I mow my lawn at eight fifteen and I'm not done by eight thirty, I am now in violation of this. So how do I go about petitioning to the select board, which it says I may do on here, if I know I'm going to be making noise after eight thirty?
Well, my amendment changes it to eight thirty.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. So if I start at eight fifteen and I'm not finished at eight thirty, so if I know I'm going to be doing it after eight thirty, how frequently do I have to ask the select board for permission? That's my only question.
Well, after eight thirty, the sun is setting, and if you're out there mowing your lawn, you should be concerned for your safety.
Sorry, that's not answering my question.
Excuse me, excuse me, no cross-debate, please, you asked a question.
Okay, through you, Mr. Moderator, my question was not answered.
No, hold on, please, 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 hold on. Alright, just hold on, let him answer your question, okay? Then when he answers your question, you ask your two questions and...
No, I've just asked one, it hasn't been answered yet.
Excuse me?
I just asked one question, it hasn't been answered yet, I haven't asked you...
Well, you kept going on and on, so, I'm gonna ask you the...
He hasn't, okay. I will wait for an answer.
Yep, wait a minute, please, what's your name again?
Lindsay Weber.
Lindsay. Did you answer a question, Peter?
Repeat the question.
Okay, repeat the question.
So that's the problem, I've repeated my question?
No, come on, no comment.
Uh, so my question is, it says, any person seeking to emit noise in such a manner as prohibited in this paragraph, may request permission to do so for a specific place and period of time for the select board. How often do I have to make my request to the select board?
There is no limit on that.
So would I have to do it every day, is my question? How would I go about doing that? Or can I say for the entire summer? I'm just asking for clarification.
How big's your lawn?
Respectfully, I feel like this is really getting out of hand, and this is why we're here all night. I have a question. Mr. Mellon, I have a question, it has not been answered, and I feel like he's just being petty at this point.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, to answer the question, I said you would have, there's no limit on that. So you would have to approach the select board for that.
Could I perhaps have a member of the select board answer my question, then?
One, one second, Mr. Keevey wants to weigh in on that, it's chair of the select board.
Yeah, so I, I asked a similar question, I believe, uh, when we've heard this bylaw at the select board meeting. And, uh, uh, though I don't wanna speak necessarily for town council, I did ask the town council, Brian Waters here tonight, about this, and, uh, really about, ultimately about the discretion that the enforcement agents have in, in handling a case like this. Uh, because if you are, you know, if it's, the limit's eight thirty and you're out there at eight thirty-five, uh, that's sort of similar to driving fifty-six miles over, you know, a mile over the speed limit. Uh, and to what extent is that enforced? Um, our expectation, I would say, is that the enforcement of it, uh, the discretion to enforce it is reasonable, and that, that people aren't getting, you know, uh, warnings or, or, uh, fines for mowing the lawn at, at eight thirty-five, eight forty, right? So, but this is, you know, something you more, more expect to see with, um, you know, habitual offenders, where they were, are throwing parties until midnight. It's not necessarily somebody who's just got home a little late and is trying to mow the lawn, uh, later. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, that was a great answer, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my second question is related to enforcement. I believe a previous speaker asked, but I'm not sure if the answer was given. Um, as far as enforcement, is it strictly going to be based on complaints made, or if someone happens to be driving by, such as a cop driving down my street, and sees us out doing something that violates it, are they going to pull over, or is it strictly based on complaints or a combination of both?
Who can answer that?
I, I mean, I, I, that's a good question, Lindsay. Is it Lindsay, correct?
Yes, Lindsay.
Um, please choose, come, come down the aisle here.
Sorry, I'm dealing with something else at work. I'm gonna tell you that our department is too busy to be driving down enforcing whether someone's mowing their lawn at eight thirty at night. But this is a good tool for the town, because we are having problems with short-term rentals and people throwing massive parties in our community, and taking resources from the rest of the taxpayers in our town. So there is a reason for this and a purpose for this. Mowing someone's lawn, having a small cook out in your backyard, that's not what we're doing. But if you are disturbing your neighbors and your neighbors are calling us, we will respond, because we're gonna respond to the neighbor's calling. We're not going to look for it, we have enough business, unfortunately, in town, to go deal with.
Thanks, chief, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you both. Mr. Anokian, you're up next.
Hi, Von Anokian, Precinct Four. Is there a, is there an exemption in here for a generator used during a power outage? Because I know a couple years ago, the power was out for about three days, and generators ran twenty-four hours a day. Because it, it says audible at a hundred fifty feet, most generators can be heard from more than a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty feet.
Can you, we have a answer to that?
That's a good question, Von, I believe we mentioned that before, if that would be considered an emergency situation? Be exempt from this?
So, so there are exemptions during emergency, all, all sound?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, can you repeat your question?
So there's an exemption during emergency time, who, who decides if it's an emergency?
The person that, if there was a complaint, the person at the scene would decide. I mean, if there's a generator, if there's a power outage and there's a generator on, you know, it's pretty obvious that that's an emergency situation.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you both, okay, Mr. Scardino?
Joe Scardino, Precinct One. Through you, Mr. Moderator, at the town council. What's the, uh, so I get fined a hundred dollars? I got a warning, and then I believe the first offense is a hundred dollars? Am I correct, uh, to the proponent?
What is it?
The second offense is a hundred dollars.
Okay, so let's assume I get the hundred. What's the appeal process for that? Why, you ask town council?
I'm gonna refer to town council on that.
So, Mr. Moderator, through you to the, to the speaker, for a non-criminal disposition ticket, there's a process where you can file a request for an appeal with the district court, you have twenty-one days to do so, and you get a hearing before a magistrate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, let's move on. Dawn Dino, I believe?
Hi, my name is Dawn, Dawn Dino, I'm from Precinct Four, I have two questions. One, if a person was throwing a party, they would have to go before the board to let them know that they were throwing a party? No, okay. And the other question was, can I move, make a motion to move this question? No?
No, not at this time.
No, okay.
There's some other people.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Any other questions up here? Are we all done with the questions? No? Mr. Walsh?
Dave Walsh, Precinct Three. A question related to dumpsters, uh, being, does this cover having dumpsters during those off-hours, or is that already covered under another regulation?
Can anybody, you know, probably with the backup noise or something?
I'm sorry?
You're talking probably to backup noise during those hours?
Yeah, it talks about noise and talks about excavation, demolition, but not specifically about emptying dumpsters at that hour.
Yeah, can we have, is there any answer to that?
I mean, I'm reading the paragraph that you just mentioned, you're right, it does not mention dumpsters, so I don't believe dumpsters, dumpsters would apply to this.
Is it, second question, is it covered under another regulation? Because I know there's parts of the town that people do dumpster emptying.
Uh, the Board of Health permits the dumpsters, uh, and there are sometimes special conditions put on to dumpster permitting that could address the issue you're referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jack Collins?
Are we on pro and con or?
We're technical questions. Okay, I don't see any more technical questions, still in pro, pro and con debate. You pro con, John?
No, I'm here to move the question.
Well, we're gonna go to pro and con debate. Alright, so you're not accepting the motion to cut off the debate? Alright. Okay, pro and con debate, Jack?
Thank you, Mr... Record voice, you know the...
Come on, Jack, please step up.
I'm trying.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I'm against this article. I think we have enough bylaws in this town. Are we gonna start, um, fining MBTA for the horns that are blowing at five o'clock in the morning, eleven o'clock at night? I mean, this, we, we are, I believe we are putting more restrictions on families, taxpayers in this town than needs to be, uh, taxed on, not taxed on, but, uh, regulated. If people are having parties and they're allowed, if they're after a certain hours and their neighbors complain, call the police, that's their job. We don't need to have code enforcement officers and all this, like, people coming out in the select board, making rules or regulations to suppress our rights. That's all. Find the MBTA.
Thank you, next up is, uh, Juan Fox.
Juan Fox, Precinct One. I'm for both halves of this article, especially the last half, and that's what I'm here to speak about. Engine braking is a, is a serious issue and noise pollution on my street. Now, all the mains, and I live one of the main streets. All the main streets are, um, uh, they have trucks going by, but, uh, even though the trucks are going by, these are all still residential streets with people's homes right on the streets. on the streets. And having these, uh, the, uh, the trucks using the, the engine, the engine brake, uh, is, is startling, and it's, it's a tremendous amount of noise. Uh, the trucks do not need to, to use these brakes to stop. Uh, if they did, they shouldn't be on the road. They need this brakes, they use this brake to save the brakes over time. And they could use it in emergency situations, and this article covers for that. But they don't need to use it in town, next to these houses, as they go down the street. So, uh, my, my, I agree with this completely, this is something, uh, especially with Logistics Park coming online shortly, that place is gonna have 250 trucks a day, uh, coming in 24/7, 365, that's like every six minutes, and on, on these particular roads. And with, uh, without this, we're gonna have this kind of jake braking going on, could be going on well into the evening, and, and middle of the night. So, uh, this is, I think, very important, and also considering that all the rest of the towns, uh, around us are going that way. Many have already put these bylaws in to prevent jake braking. Jake braking is not a necessary thing for trucks to operate. They use it to save the brakes, and only in an absolute emergency situation is it really required. And, and once again, this article, uh, covers for that, so, please vote for this.
Okay, thank you, let's move on. Lisa Lyons?
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. While I am generally very much against additional regulations to a previous speaker's point, I am strongly for this article, be for the peace of mind of neighbors who are dealing with out-of-control neighbors, and it would help our police department manage this. And it is for the life and safety of your neighbors that we be able to get this under control. I just wish, um, the amendment was from 7:00 PM to...
We're not talking about that anymore, we're talking about this one.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back to Noah, please identify yourself, please.
Noah Betahron, Precinct Six. Um, I have serious concerns with the broadness of this amendment. Um, as written, uh, there is no requirement for a given decibel level, there's, uh, it's left entirely up to the discretion of whoever gets called over. This is opening the door to harassing our neighbors just because we don't like them. Um, it leaves the door wide open for your neighbor to complain that you're too loud because, um, you annoy them for other reasons, because you don't bring your trash can in in time, because you're, um, too diverse, um, because of any number of reasons that your neighbor might not like you. Um, and it just increases the, the, um, number of tools that we can use to harass our neighbors with. And I, I, I don't like the, the way that is set up. It would be one thing if we had, you know, decibel levels and a, a clear, distinct way of saying, well, this much is too much, but, uh, at this level of broadness, it, it just, it leaves the door wide open to use of the, the town's resources to harass each other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, next up, Edie Felice.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As I read through this article, it was kind of, it seemed that it was just thrown together. For example, people have asked, you know, what constitutes noise pollution? And in the article, the definition for noise pollution is if it is heard in public space at a distance of 25 feet. Of course, it doesn't tell us who's measuring. So, I guess, like that old TV show, I would say, get yourself a tape measure and don't leave home without one. We already talked about the festival. And noise injury, this is a good one. Noise injury, it is to be judged at any location by a passerby. It's like, how does that possible work unless the passerby is an, you know, audiologist? I mean, it, it's, Lester, it's just, uh, ridiculous the way it's written up. Leaf blowers, between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. I think what you gotta understand too with leaf blowers and that type of equipment, uh, these are the equipment that, uh, are probably used on the majority of people's homes here, uh, for people that take care of the, um, the property and so forth. Now, during the spring, summer, and fall, um, even when I was in the business, you know, you'd be out there probably till like sunset, as opposed to 7:00. So I think someone else had mentioned maybe using sunset as, and of course, if you're in the high of the year, then you would be able to, uh, just use sunset. And enforcement, it says that the first choice would be for the building inspector. So, there's noise on the weekend, building inspectors down the Cape, so, okay, then it says, the next thing you would do is call the police department. So, apparently, the writers here don't think that the officers are busy enough. So, I, I would suggest a conversation with the chief, maybe, maybe this, uh, is part of the use, because one part they talk about criminal charges. So, it would seem if this were to happen, which I think is ridiculous, but, uh, the police would have to add tape measures...
And you have about 20 seconds.
And DB meters to the bills. And that's the other thing, we have a, a noise bylaw, and not, I think, once the DB meter was made. I mean, how can you have restrictions without a measure? Uh, this is, maybe, a good idea to have noise control, but this doesn't do it, it should be probably sent to a committee and fixing up.
Time's up, Dave, thank you, thank you for your comments. Moving on, Mr. Davis?
Lester Davis, Precinct Three. Um, I like the idea of the, the law, but this is a bad law, the way it's written, the fines are not defined, uh, they, they can go on forever. If you get fined once, it doesn't tell you when it expires, should expire in a year. That's why the, the Second Amendment was great, but it wasn't allowed to be heard, and I think this law should be, uh, this, at this time, should, uh, no vote is required.
All right, thank you. Okay, there are some other, let me just say, there are some other people who'd like to comment, but I'll leave it up to the body here. All right? Nope, it's, we moved the question, it's Carolyn Campbell, is there a second?
Yes.
Diane Dolan seconded it. Now, again, there's people that want to speak, but I'll leave it up to the body. We'll do a voice vote. I did recognize it. Carolyn, I said Carolyn Campbell. No. Also, the moderator heard a lot, and, but the body has a right to decide. Okay, I understand. Right, all right. So, by voice vote, all those who favor, want to move the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I think the ayes have it. Okay, all right, on the motion, it's a main motion as amended. Okay, simple majority vote, let's just wait for it to set up. Mr. Moderator? You have a point of order?
I have a comment, Celtics won.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we ready? We're ready, simple majority, vote now, the voting is open. Main motion as amended. All right, Article 44 fails, 62 yes, 66 no, two abstentions. All right, we're moving on. All right, what time we have here? 9:57. Pardon me? That was main motion as amended. Like, I definitely said that, main motion as amended, we accepted the amendment, became a main motion as amended. Okay, let's move on, we still have a little time here, Article 45, wetland bylaw changes. All right, looking for Jerry McDonald?
Mr. Moderator, just a point of information.
I can't hear you, John.
I'm waiting for the mic to catch up. There we go. John Angerino, Precinct Four, just a, a question for you here. Because you had a, a main motion that was amended, and that failed, do you still have to act on the main motion?
Uh, let me ask Town Council.
Thank you.
We just voted it, he's telling me we just voted it, main motion as amended.
So you don't have to go back to the main motion?
No.
Thank you very much.
The amendment, let me just explain to the body, the amendment, once it passed, which it did, becomes the main motion as amended. And then we vote on the main motion, it was a simple majority, which failed.
All right, I, I just wanted to know, thank, thank you.
No, good question for everybody, I'm sure other people were thinking of it. Now we're at Article 45. I recognize Jerry McDonald.
Hi, Jerry McDonald, Precinct Four, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. Uh, I don't know if you want me to read the motion, uh, Mr. Moderator, but we're gonna table it for the very end of the town meeting, if the town meeting continues to next week.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the motion?
No, it's motion to table, good. I'm sorry, let Town Council wants to say. Why do you say that? We need clarification, jury. Town Council?
Mr. Moderator, uh, with your permission, just, uh, to the Speaker, just so I understand the motion correctly, is this a, a motion to postpone this article until last on the annual town meeting warrant?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I've always used the word table, but if you want to use postpone, that's fine.
Changes the quantum of vote, that's all. Um, but just to be clear, you're not asking for it to be anything other than just last? Okay.
We're moving to postpone this article for the time being, until the end of town meeting.
Okay, seconded by Steve Kevie. All right. Okay, this is simple majority, all right, I'm just gonna take a voice vote, simple majority. You have it set up? Okay, we have it set up by clicker then. Simple majority, the, the motion was to postpone Article 45, wetland bylaw changes, to the end of town meeting. That's the motion on the floor. Please vote now, simple majority, one, two, or three. Motion passes, 78 yes, 38 no, four abstentions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we already completed Article 46 back on May 7th. Okay, Article 47 on page 68, charter changes and clarification. Becca Marksen? Okay, I'm sorry, uh, I have you for the motion. Can you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I recognize you for the motion.
Becca Marksen, Precinct Seven, previous chair of charter review. Uh, I make a motion that the town vote to amend the town charter as set forth in a document entitled 2025 Proposed Charter Amendments on File with the Town's Clerk's Office, and included in the appendix here too, with proposed deletions shown as strikeouts, and proposed additions shown in underlined red line, and in accordance with General Law 43B, Chapter 10, to see if the town will vote to place on the 2025 annual election ballot. The question to read, shall the town amend the Town of Stoughton Town Charter as set forth in a document entitled 2025 Proposed Charter Amendments on File with the Town's Clerk, Town Clerk's Office, and included in the appendix here too.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Uh, let me read Municipal Regulations Report. They voted 7-0-1 to approve and recommend the town meeting 40, Article 47, as written in the warrant. The note is Michael Hardman abstained, as he's a member of the Charter Review Committee. All right, for the presentation, we have Charter Review, Review Committee, Becca Marksen. And could you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, Amy Polievko, Precinct Four. Um, first, I, I need to make a, a motion to amend, uh, there's a typo in the proposed motion. It says, to see if the town will vote to place it on the 2025 annual election, which already happened, it would be the 2026, um, election ballot.
What's that again? What was the motion? What'd she say? Oh, okay, she's just clarifying. Okay, yeah, that was just typo in the book there, but she's moving it, all right. Okay, second. We're gonna, all right, any discussion on this, on that motion?
Mr. Moderator, I don't know what we're voting on, over here, over here, Dave. What are we voting on?
Gotta have a clarification from Town Council on that. Okay, what was the motion again? We need some clarification.
Uh, right now, there's a typo in the motion that says that if it's approved here, and approved by the Attorney General, it would then go to the town to vote in an election. It says right now it would be during the 2025 annual election, which happened last month. It wouldn't happen until next April, so it should say the 2026 annual election. So it's just changing 25 to 26, when the town would vote.
That's, that's pretty much one, two, three, four, fifth line down, just so everybody knows. It starts with vote to place on the 2025 annual election ballot, it should say 2026. Everybody clear on that? Do, are you clear on that, Dave?
I just, point of order, David Larry, Precinct Six. For just consistency, I have no problem with making this change at all, but for consistency, we've had some changes that were requested that had to not be allowed directly, saying, I want to make it, an amendment on the floor, but couldn't, because they didn't have, because of a 48-hour rule. If there's not gonna be a 48-hour rule here, we're not showing any consistency, so shouldn't we be suspending the rules because we're trying to preserve consistency with the way we apparently said at the beginning at the organizational, that we're gonna follow these rules? Rules are changing on the fly, and that's what I'm kind of not happy with.
Well, I think, thank you for your point of order.
Point of clarification?
Becca, go ahead.
So this is a scribness error, which does not require a motion?
Right, it's pretty much a typo. Okay, and in the past, we always, whether it's in the recommendations, or it's in a motion, over the years, even, I think even this time around, it's minor, it's not substantive, it doesn't change anything, yes, it changes the year, but it's because it was a typo. It happens all the time. The, the documentation's put together as best as possible, we all make errors in typing, happens every day, so, Moderator's gonna, uh, and, as a discretion, Car, okay?
I would just like to remind everyone of the text of the procedural motion that we passed at the start of town meeting, which said, move that any substantitive or complex amendments or substitute motions, i.e. anything beyond clerical corrections for an article, other than the operating budget, be considered only if in writing and further that such proposed substitute motion or amendment be delivered in writing to the town moderator 48 hours in advance of the session at which the motion is to be made.
See, that, thank you, Kamel, for providing that clarification. So there's no, shouldn't there be any problems with this? It's a typo, clerical error, it happens every day. So, it happened here, so, I'm gonna say, there's no need for the motion anyways. Right? Yeah, there's no need for the motion, so let's backtrack. There's no need to suspend. Do I need to make the motion? Okay, we're gonna amend that, so, I'm gonna ask for a voice vote, just to amend it for the records to 2026. Okay, by voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all. All right, now we're back.
Thank you. Um, Reggie, if you can put it up on the screen? Reggie, if you can put it up on the screen. So Charter Review has been meeting since December of Twenty Twenty Two. We've met over thirteen times to discuss the following points in the charter. Hopefully, everybody was able to pick up the Charter Review Proposed Changes rationale, which is on the front table. It was also put out on the virtual table. So I'm going to hopefully run through this really quickly. The second book actually has this redline version, although it's not printed in color, so it just looks faded. So starting with Section C dash one, we've made three changes to clarify language, standardize capitalization for proper nouns. So that was the only changes we've made in Article one. And then moving to Article four, we've made a few changes for Article four. Four dash one for intent, we did a clarification of procedures. We added in a statement that the procedures are in place whether or not the town manager is under contract due to past differences of opinion. We want a clarification for that. Then for, we did the same for powers and duties, which is B, which is specifically name the budget as part of the fiscal plan. We also did standardizing capitalization for proper nouns. For E, we did a grammar correction. And then for F, we did, we included both revenue and expenses to clarify the procedure for the school department budget. For G, we did not feel there was a need to specifically name the town library when we did not name other, when we are not naming other town buildings. In H, we removed designation of books to make it inclusive of all school department purchases, and we removed the public library as exempt from purchases falling under the town manager's duties. In K, we did a clarification of procedures as well. We added the boards and commissions to the list of possible entities under the town manager's control, and we also updated language from books and papers to records to include current technology. And then for absence of town manager, we just did a grammar correction. Then moving down to Article seven, this is the annual special, annual and special town meeting. We included in C seven dash one, we included language to clarify the process for opening a warrant for special town meeting. For C seven dash three, we standardized capitalization for proper nouns. For C seven dash four, we clarified procedures. We changed serve as a member rather than be a member. And then C seven dash five, we clarified that the town meeting terms may be shorter than three years in the case of filling a term that has been unfulfilled in previous elections or one that was vacated in the midst of a standard three-year term. We wanted to just bring clarification to that. Then still in Article seven, for vacancies and then for election by ballot, we standardized capitalization for proper nouns. For C seven dash eleven, for organization town meet, organizational town meeting, we updated the process of organizational town meeting to streamline the process, allowing for the business of the entire body to be addressed first, followed by precinct-specific business. This will allow precincts to conduct their business at different paces. For C seven dash twelve, we removed language allowing town meeting representatives to receive reimbursement for expenses. C seven dash thirteen, non-voting members, we added the town accountant to the list of officials present at town meeting. We added language to make clear that the individual whose roles are named in this section may or may not be elected town meeting representatives. And then C seven dash fourteen, we clarified the process for moderator appointments to FinCom. And then we did standardization of capitals, capitalization for proper nouns. We removed language about the tax rate in the warrant. We added language to allow for precinct representatives to municipal regulations. And then we did clarification of procedures. We allowed it, we added language to allow for precinct representations in addition to municipal regulations, to municipal operations, and intergovernmental relations. So everything is in the, in Book Two, starting at page three thirty-seven. And hopefully, everybody had a chance to read through this before town meeting. Thank you.
You all set?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, you heard the presentation. Okay, technical questions? Anybody?
Yes. Mr. Inzavino's pushing me.
Excuse me?
Mr. Inzavino is pushing me. If anyone.
Where's the police officer? Okay. Pat Colburn, go ahead, identify yourself.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. Thank you for all this work. I did have a question about Article four, C four dash one intent, and where it talks about, if I could just read it, I'm sorry, I'm going blind. The town manager shall serve at the will of the select board, except that a vote of majority plus one of the full membership of the select, shall, select board shall be required to discharge them with the addition of whether or not the town manager is under contract. If I could just hear from legal, I was under the impression it could be wrong that assigned contracts supersedes a bylaw. I'm sorry, it was on page two of the backup?
Page three thirty-eight.
Three thirty, okay.
Just give him a moment to review it.
I'm sorry?
You want Town Council to weigh in?
Yes, please.
He's just reviewing it. Oh, no, it's good. Oh, okay, could you, where's he going to look for that? He wasn't part of this bylaw. The Charter Review Committee right up here.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Where can he find the section that the question was on? Top of page three thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight of the backup book.
And again, what's the question, Pat? Sorry, repeat it.
The question, they're adding the position that the town manager can be removed with a four, four vote majority, whether or not the town manager is under contract. I just wanted to verify, does the contract supersede the bylaw or does the bylaw supersede the contract? I thought the contract superseded, but I could be wrong.
It's a complicated question. There's a lot to unpack there. Let me try to be as simple as I can. So usually, the contract is the expression of the will of the board, and contracts can expire. So what apparently this language is seeking to do is require the supermajority vote whether or not the contract speaks to that one way or another. So whether it expires, it appears to be meant to address a specific situation. And so the charter, it's not a bylaw, the charter would govern the select board's authority to discharge the manager irrespective of whether or not there was language in the contract or the contrary, but that would also be the will of the board of selectmen. And so they would be obligated to only enter into a contract that was consistent with the highest law of this town, which is the charter. So it creates a, kind of a circular situation. And because this charter is currently silent on that point, as probably some people in this room are well aware, we've had managers work with contracts and managers work without contracts, and that's led to very different results because the courts have had to figure that out.
If I may ask the second question, which is a follow-up, does state law weigh in on that subject? I just want to make sure that a charter doesn't conflict with state law or a contract. This is, I'm sorry, this is just back from the recall days, and my memory's a little...
No, I know, and, and the opinions that we got back in those days were based on a reading by the court of the charter as it existed then. This language obviously didn't exist, right? And so at that time, there was language that the court had to interpret in the contract and whether or not that was consistent with state law, the town manager statute, and the charter. And so that's a complicated exercise the court had to do. And so in this case, if the select board entered into a contract that violated the charter, that would be a problem for the select board. So they wouldn't be able to do that when we were negotiating the chart, the contract, excuse me. And so this would only come up in a situation where there was an existing contract and the charter was changed during the pendency of that contract. And I would venture a guess that that contract would still be enforceable.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you both. John Inzavino?
Yes, John Inzavino, Precinct Four. I'm going to ask the maker of this motion, under, on page three forty-three, under Section C seven dash thirteen, on the non-voting members of town meeting, they do make reference to the town accountant, and I'm wondering if that should actually be changed to the town's financial director? Because that is now the position that oversees the town accountant. The finance director instead of town accountant?
Let me ask Town Council. Oh, okay. I guess I refer to Charter Review Committee. Steve Cavy, did you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I would just like to add that a charter still has a position of town accountant, and the select board appoints the town accountant. The financial director is, is, could be appointed by the town manager, and makes sense to make the town accountant the finance director, but there's no requirement that it be the town accountant. And I think this still would fall within, within the charter, under the purview of the town accountant, which would be the, you know, keeper of records and contracts and stuff like that.
I'm just wondering if we should have the town finance director listed as a non-voting member, since that's the person that's been presenting everything, not the town accountant. It was just a point to make, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you both. Next up, Lisa, did you sit down? Okay, David Laurie?
David Laurie, Precinct Six. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One of my questions has to do with a couple mentions around the school budget within the changes.
What number are you looking at?
Well, I can pull up the number. It's, it's kind of a general question, but to your point, you want to have that, thirty-eight? Bottom of page three thirty-eight, according to my colleague here, three thirty-eight. Here it is. Yeah. It says that the school bud, school department budget as prepared by a school committee, but it also talks about probable, about books, purchase of books on Section H. It goes on to several different mentions about how you want to make exceptions where the town has to, has to carve out sections where we can't talk about the school's expenditures. It's just certain things in which you are trying to make, it sounds, it looks to me like you're looking to pull certain things to be just for the school to look at and not for the, not for the charter to allow other things like books, book purchases and other things. It says probable amount of revenue and expenses. There's different mentions, like in Section F of, on C, on Chapter C four dash two, Powers and Duties, Section F. And I just had a question because I did some reading about Mass General Law Part One, Title Twelve, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-four, and it goes on and on about all the different aspects of how a school's duties and powers over their budget are already there.
So what's your question?
So my question is, is why are you making changes to the charter if the state law already carves out those controls and powers for the school? It seems like a conflict might be occurring.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator. So Article four is only related to the town manager, so the reason we're taking that out of Section F is because the town manager has no power over the school department budget. It gets submitted to them to then insert into the larger town budget. And then, again, the same thing in Section Eight, they don't have, the town manager's position doesn't have the authority to make purchases for the school. So we're just making it clear, the two distinctions.
My second question through you, Mr. Moderator, is, I wanted to do my research on this, on this, I cared deeply about it enough, where I wanted to find information about your meetings. I know that you're part of the open meeting law requirement, but I could find all your agendas from last year, but I can't find any minutes. Because I wanted to see how your deliberations went during the last year over much of the material we're looking at now. So I want to know, are there minutes for your meetings?
The minutes are attached to the next month's agenda. The minutes from the previous month are on the next month's agenda.
That's how you, you didn't, you didn't?
We didn't separate them out because we voted them, the agenda would have been, you know, we made the agenda multiple pages, so like Exhibit A was the meeting minutes from the previous month.
I saw that in March, but what about last year? Is that true about last year?
It should have been on all of them.
So that's how you filed them with the agenda?
Yes.
Questions been asked and answered.
Thank you.
Okay. Carolyn Campbell, did you have a question? Okay, that's it. Dr. Baeta?
Mr. Moderator, I have a question, and I don't know how to really go through procedure. I'm not a town meeting member, but the question that I have is a technical question related to the budget process. And I'm wondering if I can ask that question as a technical question.
No, it's out of order. You're talking about the budget, is that in the?
No.
Okay, what section are you referring to, to the charter?
The technical question that I have was going to be, did the Charter Review Committee review the budget process and dates that are noted in the current town charter?
Okay, let's see if we can get an answer for you then. I don't know. I personally don't know. We're going to get that answer for you. If we can.
Sure, so we did not look at the dates, and all this does is require that the town manager take what you're giving him and put it into his budget. But I will say the town manager came to the meeting where we discussed the town manager's department, so if there was an issue, we were hoping, we got his input to make sure that we were doing it in a way that worked with the budgeting process.
So then I would ask a second technical question?
Sure.
It's the largest budget, so the question would be, why wouldn't the superintendent of schools or the school committee have been involved in that process?
He was asking, why wasn't the superintendent of schools involved in that process? That was his question.
So no disrespect, Dr. Baeta, we were just clarifying for the language in the charter, just to state that the school budget is given to the town manager for insertion into the overall town budget. We were not making any judgments or process changes. The process change was that this is how it happens. The schools do their own budget and give the budget.
All right, we're done with technical questions. Pro and con debate, seeing none? I don't see anybody standing up.
So I'm not a pro or con on this, to be quite honest, but for the process, the concern that I have is that budgeting in this town is done before we actually have state funding process coming forward. We have a December thirty-first due date within our budget process, and I think at some point, this body should consider moving that to after the state budget comes through, which is usually in the middle of January.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Baeta. All right. This is simple majority. Okay, simple majority. We ready to vote? Well, I don't, I asked pro and con, nobody got up. I'm moving on. I'm moving on. I asked for pro and con, nobody got up. Okay, well, we're going to vote. All right? Please vote now. Simple majority, one, two, or three. or three? Hold on a minute, let's get the vote. Article forty-seven passes, ninety yes, twenty-three no, five abstentions. One second? Ninety, twenty-three, five. Okay, Mr. Cole.
Mr. Moderator?
Or Mr. Carol, Carolyn Campbell.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting till Monday at seven o'clock.
Who seconded that? John Inzavino seconded. All in favor by voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it. See you Monday.